Green Harbor Waterfront Lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers so much for a fun-filled, yet affordable, family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with ramp and dock, free rowboats and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool and kiddie pool. You'll enjoy our attractive waterfront and beachside accommodations. So visit us online at gogreenharbor.com.
The selectmen has just returned from an executive session. Before we enter into public session, I'd like to ask you all to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First up this evening is the Human Services Committee Commendation Awards. Karen Cordera, I believe, or who's going to represent that?
I am. My name is Patty. My name is Patty Murphy. Can I? My name is Patty Murphy.
That's not going to amplify. It's just going to let the folks at home hear you.
Okay.
So you don't have to really bring it that close.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. My name is Patty Murphy, and I'm the Chair of the Commendations Committee of the Falmouth Human Services Committee. And since 1987, the Human Services Committee has presented annual commendation awards to individuals, organizations, agencies, groups, coalitions, partnerships, who have been active in human service work in our community. The committee presents the awards to those individuals or organizations who over time have alleviated human suffering that results from such factors as poverty, physical or mental, handicaps, unemployment, alcohol and drug abuse, lack of health insurance, anxiety and stress, crime and violence, overcrowded housing or lack of housing, or any other condition that creates suffering. The first award is being presented to Barbara Brown. Barbara, if you would come up and join me. The Human Services Committee voted to award Barbara a commendation award for the countless hours she has devoted to helping Falmouth seniors. Barbara has worked as a trained and certified volunteer in the SHINE program, which means serving the health insurance needs of elders, at the Falmouth Senior Center for over four years. She educates people about the various insurance options available to them, assists with problems that may arise, and helps individuals apply for government-assisted programs. Barbara often averages over 30 hours a week and has been known to spend additional hours on the phone or computer at night and weekends to ensure that she provides the most accurate information to Falmouth seniors. Barbara's dedication and organizational skills have allowed the SHINE program at the Falmouth Senior Center to function seamlessly, which is a significant benefit to elders and disabled residents in our community. The Human Services Committee honors Barbara and wishes to thank her for giving her time and expertise to help local seniors navigate the complicated array of health insurance options. Now, I'd like to ask Barbara Sullivan, Committee Co-Chair, to come up and present the next award.
The second award is being presented to Andrew Eads. Andrew, would you join me? The Human Services Committee voted to award Andrew a commendation award for the countless hours he has devoted to a variety of volunteer projects in our community. For the past several years, Andrew has been a regular and valued volunteer at the Falmouth Service Center, and his coworkers love his dry sense of humor and respect his dedicated work ethic. Andrew spends a major portion of his time working on the Healthy Foods on Pantry Shelves Initiative in collaboration with capabilities and the Falmouth Stop and Shop store. Each week, Andrew puts special tags on the shelves in the Stop and Shop to indicate the foods that are needed at the food pantry. He then transports and sorts the food for distribution at the service center. In this way, Andrew has helped to gather over $40,000 of donated food annually for needy individuals and families. He has also served with the Cape Cod Volunteers Serve-A-Thon and helps to keep the walkways clean and weed-free at the service center. But volunteering is not new to Andrew, just in the last few years. While living in Concord, Massachusetts, he volunteered regularly at a number of Rotary Club functions as a ticker-taker and change-maker, and was known for having very accurate money-keeping skills. Andrew exemplifies what can be done with a little perseverance and motivation. He is a great role model for people of all ages and abilities, and his sense of humor and chivalry are particularly noteworthy. The Falmouth Human Services Committee honors Andrew and wishes to thank him for giving his time and energies to help people less fortunate than himself and to make our community a better place to live. Thank you, Andrew, and congratulations. The next presenter is Elaine Cinni.
This award is being presented to Recovery Without Walls, Inc. William Dougherty, if you could join me, please?
Right in back.
Right in back, okay. Do you want to introduce them? These are the board members for Recovery Without Walls.
Paul Lugus, and I like Debbie, and Robyn Bugus.
The Human Services Committee voted to award Recovery Without Walls, Inc. a commendation award for its ongoing volunteer efforts to support women in recovery from addiction. Recovery Without Walls, Inc. is an all-volunteer, nonprofit organization founded in 2006 that offers structure, safety, support, and a path to stability for local women who are beginning the challenging road to recovery from substance abuse by utilizing a case-management approach of a variety of services have been provided to over 300 women to reach their goals, including safe housing, healthy socialization, education, career training, mentoring, general health and mental health referrals, transportation, and financial assistance. All of these services are provided at no charge and are tailored to the individual needs of each woman. The organization is funded strictly through donations and grants from individuals, foundations, community groups, and churches. The model is creative in that the volunteers are the women in recovery themselves, as they mentor each other and provide mutual support. Women further along in their recovery help the newcomers and train them in the difficult transition to a sober and drug-free lifestyle. In this way, pride and self-confidence are rebuilt, and the base of volunteers refuels itself to support the ongoing mission of the organization. Ultimately, the community is, as a whole, is the recipient of the benefits of this program, as these women are once again able to effectively fulfill their role as friends, mothers, sisters, spouses, and employees in our town. The Human Services Committee honors Recovery Without Walls, Inc. and the hard-working volunteers who make this organization successful. We thank them for their energy, vision, creativity, and devotion to supporting women as they transition to healthy and productive lives in our community. Thank you. The Human Services Committee wishes to congratulate this year's award recipients and extend their appreciation for extraordinary volunteer service, exceptional leadership, and other noteworthy contributions to the Falmouth community. We'd like to extend an invitation to the family and friends of the award recipients at this time over to the Office of Falmouth Human Services for Reception. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a few minutes before our next scheduled agenda item. If the Board would indulge to move to the summary of actions, we have to sign the warrant for the annual town election on May 21, 2013. So do I have a motion for the Board to sign the warrant?
I'll make the motion.
Motion in a second. Any further discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And Election Day, just for everyone's knowledge, is May 21. Here in the Town of Falmouth, we have some important issues that we'll be discussing a little later this evening, some ballot questions, as well as two seats on the Board of Selectmen and numerous other town elected officials, including the School Committee, and I believe the trustees at the Library as well. So...
Mr. Chairman, can I just point out on the town meeting representatives?
Yes.
I believe there are a number of spots that don't even have candidates running for them, so I encourage anyone who's out there. I think the requirement is you must get 10 votes, whether it's a write-in or a sticker campaign, but please look for the ballots to see which precincts have openings and for town meeting process to work, we need to have these positions filled.
Very true. Any other comments from the Board? Okay, we still have a little time before the scheduled agenda item. I'd like to move to the Town Meldages Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wanted to confirm, as the Board's certainly aware, the resurfacing project for Main Street is essentially complete. The restriping has been scheduled for overnight this evening, weather permitting. It looks like the weather will cooperate. That begins at approximately 10:00 PM, and notations have been placed along Main Street, asking the people not park overnight, beginning at 10:00 PM this evening. I do want to thank everyone for their cooperation with such an important community project, and it's a great way to start out our coming summer season. Also, Mr. Chairman, this past Thursday evening, Stephanie and I were pleased to attend the annual meeting of the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The event was very well-attended and indicative of the strong and expanding business and professional presence within Falmouth. Congratulations to Michael Duffany in receiving the Citizen of the Year Award, to Jim Bowen in receiving the Professional Excellence Award, to William Buddy Ferrara in receiving the Chairman's Award, and also to the Rotary Club of Falmouth in receiving the Community Service Award, a great annual event. Also, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank and acknowledge our Acting Director of Natural Resources, Chuck Martenson, for his prompt and professional action on an issue that arose over the weekend on Saturday during an event at the Library, which Chuck was, a scheduled event, which Chuck was sharing with interested members of the public, some cannonballs which had been recovered, vintage War of 1812. During that event, an individual, unanticipated, presented what appeared to be a potentially live ordinance to those assembled, and Chuck, thinking quickly and professionally, concluded the event and took appropriate action to make certain that everyone was safe, the ordinance was dealt with appropriately, and with the assistance of the bomb squad, Police Department, and others, that ordinance was disposed of properly at the town leaf dump, and all safely taken care of. So I do want to thank Chuck for his quick, professional thinking, and particularly at a time when that might be the last thing he would expect to be encountering during such a presentation, but I thank him for his professional demeanor and work in protecting the public, as always. Thank you, Chuck. Also, Mr. Chairman, I'm delighted to affirm to the Board that earlier today, I received an email notification from the Editor-in-Chief of Parents Magazine, which indicated that the Town of Falmouth has been designated by Parents Magazine as one of their 10 best beach towns for 2013 in the country. And in fact, the Town of Falmouth is designated number four on Parents Magazine's list of best beach towns in America. And of course, we were the only community in Massachusetts and one of only a couple. I think there was another one in Delaware that was further down the list from Falmouth, and we actually ranked higher than a beach in Hawaii, I noted. At any rate, it's a wonderful distinction and honor to the Town of Falmouth, and my compliments to all for their excellent work in making the town available and a welcome place for our summer visitors, and obviously, the treasures that are our town's beaches had much to do with this, but beyond that, certainly it's a wonderful place for families to gather in the summertime and enjoy a holiday in a vacational way. So wonderful distinction for Falmouth. I've notified Jay Zavala at the Chamber of Commerce and shared that information just a little while ago with the Board and others, so I did want to pass it on, Mr. Chairman, and that concludes my report.
Okay. We will move to the next item, and the next item is shellfish relay discussion. The Board remembers this past fall, we were having an original discussion about shellfish in this community, which prompted the Board to consider, in the merger of the Department of Natural Resources and the Marine Division, I guess we would call it now, in the community, to add a technician as well as additional funds for the propagation of the shellfish. We've had subsequent meetings with the shell fishermen. The state has had some reports that they wanted to continue to come up with some findings, and we had a preliminary discussion with the folks from the state, and we wanted to have a balanced discussion this evening, so that we could make any decisions we make as a community moving forward, whether it's for or against utilizing the shellfish relay. So this is an informational gathering tonight. No vote will be taken, but we do appreciate the folks from the state coming down to be able to work with us and at least give us a presentation. I know that our Department of Natural Resources has a presentation as well. So I would just ask that, I know that there are some folks that are passionate about this issue, both sides, that people be respectful of each other's thoughts and questions as we move forward, and that we gain as much information as we can this evening. I think first up would be the folks from the Division of Marine Fisheries. Good evening, and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Whoever's going to do the speaking, we need a microphone up there, so whichever way you want to do that. Yes, if you can stand up there, introduce yourself, it would be great for the record. The microphone is not for amplification, it's for the folks at home that are watching this on FCTV.
Okay.
The one on the right, up top right? Yeah.
Thank you. My name is Greg Sawyer. I'm a biologist with Marine Fisheries. I've been in the state shellfish program for 28 years, and for the last 25, I did the day-to-day operations with the animated shellfish relay program. I'm going to give you an overview and some statistics. If you have any questions, please, at any time, ask them, and no problem.
I think you'll...
We all, at Marine Fisheries, we have to adhere to what's called a model law, that's big set of rules and regulations that basically oversee how shellfish are classified and how a relay program is done, among very many others. Basically, the relay and the shellfish, the harvesting transfer of bacteriologically-contaminated shellfish from conditionally-approved areas, restricted or conditionally-restricted areas, to approved, conditionally-approved areas for natural biological cleansing. What that means is the only reason, our relay site is the Taunton River, in Somerset and Fall River. The only reason that area is closed is bacteriologically-contaminated waters. The primary reasons for relaying, it's an inexpensive source of shellfish for town resource management. Approximately $0.2 per cohag is what we've analyzed and come out to. Obviously, when you deal with contaminated shellfish, you don't want any poaching, so the more that comes out of there, the better, so you don't have any potential for poaching in the areas. Third part is employ shellfishmen. Not only getting the shellfish, but putting the shellfish into town waters, and also the fishing, commercial or recreational, will benefit from harvesting those shellfish once the shellfish have cleaned themselves. Just a little history on it. Back in the 1860s, Duxbury Relay Softshell Clams from the Jones River to Kingston, that was 1869. Since 1906, that's when the state-supervised relays went into force. The first one was ironically enough, 250 bushels from the Acushna River to Great Pond in Falmouth. That was the first one that took place. Nearly every community, coastal community in Massachusetts, especially southeastern Mass, from say Marshfield to Provincetown, to Rhode Island Line, Anne Martin V. have relayed shellfish from either New Bedford Harbor, Clarksco, or Mount Hope Bay. That means that all the Cape communities that participate in them, they have relayed for so many years that the spawn that those shellfish give off are creating future generations of shellfish, so it's self-perpetuating. The bottle ordinance, which is what we have to go by, satisfactory compliances, we write a permit. It's a very detailed and specific permit, because you are dealing with bacteriologically-contaminated shellfish. There's strict controls. There's enforcement at the harvest site to the relay site. We have, right now, the Shellfish Ward in Swansea is the enforcement officer. He's also a sergeant with the police force. All his deputies are police officers. They oversee the harvesting of the shellfish until it's given to the shellfish constable, who picks them up, or he writes out a bill of laden, which goes to the towns, so it's a strict control, you know exactly how many bags, what date they were harvested, et cetera. There's also local and state enforcement. The environmental police officer, at times, they'll follow these trucks, make sure they're going to where they should be going, and obviously, the local enforcement, once they're in the water. On the permit, these are just some, not necessarily for this, but when we identify the Taunton River, we give a specific area that shellfish can come out of. It's generally the middle to the lower part of the Taunton River, not up near the city of Taunton or anything up in there. Also, it has to have a specific description within the permit. That way, there are no chances of anything going awry. Pre-relay analysis. We measure fecal coliform, because it has to come out of a restricted area. That means it's mildly contaminated with fecal coliform. We also do metals tests and PCB testing. The limits for PCBs are two pots per million, mercury is one pot per million. The last run we did, which was last fall, I believe October, for PCBs, it came out non-detectable, and what we do is we sample in the areas where the harvesters are going to be, and the mercury is also in the non-detectable area. We're also concerned, not only with the public health, but with the health of the shellfish, because we don't want to introduce a disease from one area to another that will detrimentally impact shellfish. So we do tests for dermo, acute DX for cohags, MSX, and JOD for oysters, and we send every sample, we do three, every late February to March, we send them up to a lab in Maine, which is Kennebec River Marine Sciences. They always come back, clean as a whistle, no instance of either one of those in there, and what they do is when they analyze the shellfish, they're also looking at the tissues or the shells for anything other than those diseases, and they always come back spotless. The Taunton River, if you're not aware, is basically a cohag factory. You'll never fish it out. There are so many cohags there that it's just incredible. We have relay parameters. We have a 45-degree minimum water temperature that we must adhere to, that no harvesting occurs until at least 45 degrees. That is so when the harvesters are in the Taunton River and shellfish go overboard, they can still go into the sediments, and also, when they're transplanted into an area of town, that they have a good enough metabolism where they'll go into the sediments also. We have an administrative closure, and it's a spawning closure, from June 15 to September 15. What that means is if a town gets relay shellfish, cohags we're only talking about, if the cohags go in your water by June 15, the earliest you can open them up pending a test by us is September 15. If they go into the water after June 15, you have to wait till the next year, September of, say, 2014. What that does is allows the shellfish to spawn, so it's not a put-and-take operation, so if you put 1,000 bushels in the water, you're not just getting 1,000 back, you're also getting the spawn, the millions and millions of spawn that those will put off. My friend John always tells me that most towns, they're probably fishing off the spawn of all the shellfish that have relayed over the past decades. So I mean, it's very self-perpetuating. You really do get a good bag for the buck when you do go for the shellfish. Also, DMF, US FDA, they come in and evaluate this at least a couple times a year, and more than that, they call my boss, Mike Hickey, to see how the program's going. They go through all of our files, and we always come out with basically an A-plus. You know, they don't find anything wrong, basically. We do everything by the book. On the permit information, because you deal with bacteriologically-contaminated shellfish in the permit, it has to have the boat color, the boat name, the registration number, the harvesters' name, address, and the town with, in some instances, the towns such as Wayham, Westport, and Swansea, they employ shellfishmen to put the shellfish out. The reason we require all of this is, again, you're dealing with fekally-contaminated shellfish. The harvester, whoever harvests the shellfish, they have to have a permit on the boat or in the truck with them, both ways. That way, if they ever get pulled over, they can say, "I'm definitely permitted to do this." The tags have to be very specific with all this information on it. Again, you're dealing with a contaminated shellfish, a fekally-contaminated shellfish. Once again, the enforcement officer, who's a sergeant with the Swansea Police Department, he does a daily bill of laden. Every time the boat comes into the dock, he counts the number of full bags, he gives a bill of laden with other information on it, to the harvester, who then drives them to the town, and the shellfish ward on that end will co-sign, so that everything's, you know, the same amount of bags that leave the Taunton River. in a town, is a 50-foot buffer zone all the way around a, where the quahogs are put. That way, there's no, you don't put quahogs right up to the closure line, there's a little bit of a buffer there. Sometimes towns will do six, seven different areas, and we just require an adequate separation of the shellfish so that we know each lot. You know, we can identify each lot, and it's a one-year permit, so annually, you'd have to get renewed if you do desire to do a shellfish relay. When we open up a shellfish bed, and I'll just use Fowlmouth, for example, John Mendes will come down and take a water sample and also a quahog sample, which will be brought to our lab. Those are the parameters. The water samples have to be less than 14, which is national, national standard, and the meats have to be less than 230 fecal within the shellfish. What we require is lower than that, 160 to 170. That way, if there's a little handling, there's enough of a buffer zone. But we, on the results that I see, and I've been doing this for 25 years, I'm guessing out of 200 results, maybe two didn't fail, and we went back and tested them, and they passed. It could have been birds in the area, so you just don't know, but most of them passed. Very, very low fecal levels within them because they, because they've perched from the walls where they are. Whenever the, the shellfishermen are harvesting in the Taunton River, they have to relinquish their commercial shellfish licenses to the constable of the town they live in. That way, there's no chance of anything being sold. Harvesting, we allow sunrise at 3:00 PM. The boats generally get out there before the sun comes up, and they'll start harvesting right as the sun comes up. Sometimes they allow, they do Saturdays, but that's basically up to the town. Monday through Fridays are generally the preferred timetable. Every bag has to be tied, no shellfish remain aboard the boat, remain aboard the boat, and we can also use totes, which Westwood does, because they have an older group of deputies and shellfishmen, so the, the 80-pound bags are kind of tough to handle. The totes are a lot easier. And each bag is 80 pounds, which is a little bit better than a bushel. And we actually went down there Thursday, and there's three boats that harvest. We took random bags off each one of the boats, and they came up 80, 80 pounds on the nose. So that, and a, and a bushel generally is around 65 pounds, 70 pounds, so you're probably getting like 1.6 bushels for each bag you do get. I'm out there probably 10 times in a two-month span, and the environmental police, they're always around there, and the local law enforcement, which is also the Swansea Shellfish Ward, they're always there. So there's constant monitoring of the, of the relay process. The harvesters have to call the environmental police radio room every morning with the time, the date, the name, the permit number, and the area they're being fish, they're fishing from. If they fail to do any of this, we pull the permit right off the bat because we're very serious about, you know, fekally contaminated shellfish. We just wanted to go where they're supposed to go, the way they're supposed to get there. We also CC EPOs, Pub, State Public Health, US FDA. We also send a copy of the permits to the selectmen or mayors and shellfish constables of those towns, and also the vessel captains, since they have to have one on, on hand. What this is, this is just a little pictorial of the relay process, if you're not that familiar. This is one of the boats that's out there now, is by Bruceingham from Fairhaven, it's the Ocean Rancher. Where you can see, this is the hydraulic pump, and the hoses are going to water and connect to the dredge. This is the dredge that they pull along off of this wire. It'll just skid right on the bottom of the, of the sediments, and this is the hose that comes from the pump. What it does is it pushes pressurized water up into the front of the dredge with these nozzles. What this does is when this, it should be like this, when it's sliding across the bottom, this moves all the sediment out of the way and leaves the quahogs. And what happens is, this is the dredge coming up, and there was one picture I didn't, I didn't even have time to put in, but there's a blade that goes across here. So once the pressurized water comes out, moves the sediments, the blade scoops up the quahogs. Generally, right here, you've got about up to there full with quahogs, that's probably about three bushels, and they do that in about a minute and a half to two minutes.
My eighteenth row. But Fowlmouth used to do this years ago, in the 1960s, we had at least three boats. And Buzzet's Bay doing exactly what you're talking about right now. We know this technology.
Sir, when you speak, you're going to have to come to the microphone, but we, if we can let him finish his presentation, he'll have it up to you.
But we have this technology.
Thank you. This, this is probably a dredge and a half worth of quahogs. You can see some shells in there, a few stones, but that's almost 90% all quahogs that come out of the Taunton River. And this just shows you the process. Every bag has to be tagged. This is an 80-pound bag, which is a little bit bigger than a bushel, and they put them everywhere on that boat because they'll come in with about 100 to 115 bags every single This is just another overhead view. This is all the bags. What they do is they tie some ropes around two bags with a, with a eyelet on it, so they can hop, put them into the trailer a lot easier rather than bringing them up bag by bag. But right here is at least 100 bags of quahogs that they just harvested. This, again, I should have updated, this is the enforcement officer who used to be there, God rest his soul, he passed away a few years ago. This guy was like a hawk. He watched these guys from the second they came down there to the second they left. Very, very good enforcement officer, just like we have now. These guys, they just bring them up off the boat, they put them in a trailer, it's just one way to transport them to a town, there's at least 100 bushels right there. And then, this is what happens, this is fall 2012 in the Coles River in Swansea. They relayed about 400 bushels into this back area of the Coles River, and this is a guy, we hope he's commercial or he's over his limit, but this is a commercial guy. He's already got at least three bushels, and it hasn't taken him that long. This is just another view of them. You can see there's some cherry stones in there, but right now, they're harvesting approximately 85, 80 to 85%, Little Neck, Top Deck, Count Neck, and 15% is mostly cherry stones, but a couple of chowders, not that much. This is a shot, chart showing, since we went back to the Taunton River in 1997, I broke up the state into certain areas. Buzzet's Bay, Cape Cod, and South Shore, which is basically Flimmin' City, Marshfield, Martha's Vineyard, and Mount Hope Bay, which is Swansea. This shows you, if I don't get in English way. Basically, the total bushels that have come out of the Taunton River since 97, 133,000 bushels, or bags that's pulled with fecal in the bushel. This shows you what came out of Taunton River, and before they really went into Taunton River, they were doing some stuff out in Mount Hope Bay, but mostly, everything comes out of Taunton River. What this shows you is Cape Cod generally gets lion's share of shellfish, quahogs come out there. Most of the stuff goes to Cape, goes to Cape Cod, or a very high percentage of it, just in 2012 because Westwood did so many bushels. That's why they overtook Cape Cod. But South Shore does this a little bit. Martha's Vineyard is three towns that work it, but mostly Cape Cod, Buzzet's Bay, particularly Cape Cod, they do the most harvesting. According to our records, 47,414 bushels of quahogs have been transplanted from the Fowlmouth waters. It should say from Mount Hope Bay, Fowlmouth, and Taunton River and New Bedford. I apologize for that. I meant to fix it from the last time we had, and I forgot that. Approximately 14,000 bushels have gone to Great Pond, 15,000 Green Pond, 4,400 Barnes Pond, and about 6,700 to West Fowlmouth Harbor. If you take an average of 350, which is in the top neck, between Little Neck and Cherry Stones, you multiply that up, 47,000 bushels, about 16.6 million quahogs have already gone and transplanted through the relay program into Fowlmouth waters. This shows you the Fowlmouth history, and this history is incomplete because we just went off our files, and once you start getting into the 40s and 50s, the files start getting a little, a little iffy, and I have not done a, a search within the town of Fowlmouth. But what this shows you is, obviously, this is the town of Fowlmouth, this is where they came from. So a lot came out of Taunton River, New Bedford out of harbor, some from Balmerton Harbor, New Bedford out of harbor, Eel Pond behind MBL, et cetera, and they go into these ponds, Ganson Harbor, Great Pond, Barnes Pond, Green Pond. I mean, you just read it up and down, and this just gives you a specific of what area's within those. So when it went to Great Pond in 91, it went off Lawrence Street, and this is the totals that came out of it, just right down there. You had a big one that came out of Eel Pond behind MBL in, what's that? 84, 4,500 bushels. And you also generally out of the Taunton River, New Bedford Harbor, George Souza, when he, when he was doing the relay, anywhere from 500 to 1,500 bushels per year. This is just a continuation of it. It just shows you the massive history that Fowlmouth has had in the relay program. Again, these are the bushel amounts. Summary complete for the paperwork, for whatever reason before I got there was missing. But as I say, this is an incomplete list because I know this is on, on the lesser side here. I'm confident the numbers that I showed you are more than that.
Thank you very much. Does the board have any questions for the division, or would you like to defer until after Chuck has a chance to make a presentation, then we'll open it up to discussion? Okay? Chuck?
From all the way to the left. One more.
Good evening. My name's Chuck Marantz, and I'm the acting director of the Department of Natural Resources and shellfish constable as well. Thank you for having me this evening. What I'm going to ask when I start off, I'm going to start off pretty broad with my presentation, and then I'm going to bring it into some, some science and local history, and then I'm going to come back out again, and it'll be pretty broad. You might have some questions initially, but hopefully, they'll be answered in the So the main question we're here for tonight, should Fowlmouth purchase contaminated Taunton River shellfish for local harvest? Obviously, the benefits we just heard, we'll just review them real quick. Immediate age and size diversity with the planted population. The price is right, roughly, I believe I got some information, it was $16 to $18 a bushel off the boat. They can be sold within six months or after six months for roughly $60, $80 a bushel. They certainly depureate fecal coliform very well. We certainly do not at all contend that. There is a very high survival rate of relayed shellfish, which you don't necessarily have all the time with, with, with shellfish that we grow. There's a mortality which is quite a bit higher in the shellfish that we grow. There's a large immediate breeding stock. It's relatively low physical labor in comparison to the amount of shellfish planted, and generally, it's a one-week process. Roughly half the towns and communities on Cape Cod are currently involved in this program. Possible reasons why DMF supports it, I think we've heard those, and this is just one slide, and I'll get on with mine. State gains removal of contaminated shellfish from an area that has significant standing crop of shellfish. Paul Montague's quote was, you know, having all the shellfish over there presented policing nightmare, according to Paul. The spread of contaminated stock among multiple towns becomes less of a nuisance and enforcement liability to the state if all the towns share the liability. Ultimately, this resource will be harvested, not wasted, by being left in the Taunton River, and there is a significant economic value associated with that. Certainly, some less pressure on the state to clean up the upstream resources if there's no resource loss below. And I think the thing that we need to remember is that the Division Marine Fisheries has, you know, a statewide concern, and our concern is much more local. They're certainly looking at the shellfish picture from all the communities on the Cape, not just ours. One of my considerations when evaluating a shellfish resource, possibly taking contaminated relay, careful approach geared to the most valuable populations. Seniors, children, and families comprise 95% of the shellfish license community. Additionally, we must consider the unsuspecting consumer, our restaurant and fish market patron. The bottom line, who eats these animals and what is the repetitive consumption factor of the relay quahogs? A handful of meals in a year, not a long-term problem, really, but if many people per year eat these specific shellfish, the scope of concern perhaps should broaden. Just to review, 95% of our license holders are recreational diggers, and the remaining five roughly are commercial. These are numbers from 2002 to 2011. They're certainly representative of what we have over the last 10 years. So what will my presentation focus on primarily from here forward? It's going to focus on public health. These are the concerns associated with a recreational license holder who repetitively and unknowingly harvests these quahogs from an acute planting and feed them to their families. Over 95% of our shellfish permit holders are recreational, as I've said. We need to talk about public health and how the board would like to guide our fishery. In very broad terms, Taunton River watershed and associated rivers did not fare well in the Industrial Revolution. Over the years, there have been numerous superfund cleanup sites within the watershed. Many of the past and current industrial activities in this watershed lend to my concern. Taunton River watershed is the second-largest watershed in Massachusetts. The system encompasses all portions of 40 cities and towns. The 2001 National Pollution Discharge Elimination System report shows numerous industrial and wastewater treatment plant discharge overflows into the Taunton River system. Taunton River drains into Mount Hope Bay, and the lower sections of the Taunton River are urban and industrial, industrialized. If you look at the current national priority EPA superfund sites in the Taunton River watershed, you're going to find three that are listed in there. Hathaway Patterson Corp. in Mansfield, Shipack Landfill, and Alabroan Norton, Cannon and Engineering Corp. I'd encourage everyone this evening, when they go home tonight, to Google search these and see what's in these, what the, what the issues are of concern here. And just to review for anyone, a superfund is the federal government's program to clean up the nation's uncontrolled hazardous waste sites. This is from the EPA.gov. So what is the current toxic state of the Taunton River? Many sources of pollution have led to multiple toxins such as PCB and heavy metals to be released into the river system. In order to scientifically demonstrate how one of the many contaminants found in the Taunton River can transfer through food chain systems, please follow a brief scientific literature review I've put together for the board. As an example, we will follow a specific polychlorinated biphenyl known as Ericlore 1268. To review polychlorinated biphenols, PCBs, are man-made organic chemicals that were banned in 1979. PCBs have demonstrated to cause cancer, as well as other variety of adverse health effects. Once in the environment, PCBs do not readily break down. They're also taken up in the bodies of small organisms and fish. As a result, people who ingest fish may be exposed to PCBs that have bioaccumulated in fish. And again, these are all from www.epa.gov. To start, 2006, Mark Cantwell was working on his PhD. In his PhD program, he did sediment cores and collected cores across the transect in the Taunton River. It indicated that multiple sources of organic chemicals and heavy metals to the river existed. The specific PCB, Ericlore 1268, was identified and measured in each of the sediment cores. The substantial level of Ericlore, the substantial levels of Ericlore 1268 are still present in superficial sediment more than 50 years after the discharge ceased. Ericlore 1268 is a recognized carcinogen and developmental toxicant. From 1998 Environmental Science and Technology Journal, this work examined PCB Ericlore 1268 concentrations in fish and their prey in an estuary polluted by a superfund site. It found that tissue profiles of fish gut contents and of species representing a simple food chain indicated that PCBs are likely transferred via the food web. 2009, the Florida, the West Florida Center for Environmental Diagnostic and Bioremediation did some work. They found that many of the common contaminants can bioaccumulate in organisms, organisms due to retention rates exceeding depuration rates. We have shown that as a result of past discharges, there are elevated levels of PCB in various water bodies of the Pensacola Bay system, leading to bioaccumulation in fish and shellfish tissue, in some cases, reaching high enough levels posing potential cancer and non-cancer health risks. And finally, 2004 Chemisphere, there's limited information available on the uptake and depuration of the more toxic chlorinated variations of hydrocarbon, such as Ericlore 1268. The cleansing of shellfish for human consumption may not be appropriate if the more toxic variations are not eliminated during the depuration period. Depuration rates of compounds were slower in chronically exposed shellfish. Brief summary of our literature, Ericlore 1268 was found in the Taunton River sediment. Shellfish bioaccumulate PCBs such as Ericlore 1268. Therefore, there is a strong scientific correlation which suggests that shellfish living in the sediment in the Taunton River contain Ericlore 1268. the sediment in the Totten River contain Ericlore twelve-sixty-eight. Few other considerations to take into account when we're looking for dredging for coags, we must ask how the physical mechanics of dredging for coags in industrial watershed impacts water quality around the remaining shellfish. Dredgers need to dig below the shellfish to harvest them, resulting in a resuspension of sequestered sediment. Need to ask the question, what is introduced to the living animals after the dredging makes it pass through the agitated and older historic soils below the coags? As dredging operations for shellfish take place, the resuspension of sequestered metals and other toxins such as PCB increases on the ocean floor. The EPA URI Office of Marine Programs and the Narragansett Bay Commission produced a joint document that talks about the policies and management for the nearby Narragansett Bay. And in this, they stated, sediments that contain heavy metals can cause problems when dredging projects are proposed in these highly polluted areas. If these toxic substances are resuspended in the water due to dredging, it could cause more pollution problems in the bay. Again, that was from the EPA URI Office of Marine Programs, the Narragansett Bay Commission. More recently, and of more interest to us locally here in Falmouth, two thousand and five, the Massachusetts Coastal Zone Management proposed dredging spoils be dumped from the New Bedford Harbor area off Falmouth Harbor. In two thousand and five, the Falmouth community worked diligently to block the state's CZM proposal to dump dredge spoils. Local leaders were praised for their diligence in sparing our community from this proposal. After demonstrating that there were possible threats to local ecological function and public health, the project was abandoned. It seems counterintuitive and inconsistent with the Falmouth's work in the last fifteen years to keep our resources pristine, that we would import shellfish from a polluted urban watershed and plant these in our local ponds for human consumption. A thorough environmental impact assessment would hold this relay proposal to the same scientific rigors that the state's coastal zone management dredge project was held by the EPA. What I'd like to do quickly is just look at the dichotomy between shellfish in water and different standards. EPA standard for PCB in drinking water is point-five parts per billion of PCB in water. The FDA standard for the action limit for PCB in shellfish, rattle parts, is two parts per million. That's covered by twenty-one CFR one oh nine point three zero. What's the difference? First of all, there's different agencies to regulate shellfish in water, EPA and the FDA. Secondly, humans generally consume significantly more water than they eat shellfish, therefore action levels need to be lower in water. Similarly, if one consumes a considerable amount of shellfish from an acute area, as our family diggers often do, consideration should be given to this disparity. Often commercially harvested shellfish are mixed into larger markets and are generally not consumed with the same intensity and from the same acute source as the family harvested shellfish. Respectable argument could be made that commercially, this might not be as much of a concern. Another issue is how do we enforce the shellfish when they get here? Folks might recall a case from a number, a few years back. Case with Commonwealth versus Manola in Maddox. It was a two thousand and ten case, and there's still some unresolved issues with this case in the court. Contaminated shellfish were sold by fishermen to a local shellfish buyer after the harvesters were told by an officer that the shellfish were contaminated. The facts of the case were we lost the case on the grounds that the Commonwealth was not following proper notification procedure for contaminated areas. Rulings and transcripts of this case were passed along to the division for correction. As of a few months ago, no resolution has been made with this issue. This has not been resolved, making criminal process of contaminated shellfish digging near impossible in our district courts, and these are in our district court. We are already legally challenged by the contaminated shellfish liability we already have here. Why would we assume additional liability by bringing in more contaminated shellfish? Next thing I'd like to cover is the shellfish transparency and tagging. Under the state's program, contaminated shellfish can spend the majority of their life in the Totten River. Then after spending six months in Falmouth waters, they can be commercially tagged as local shellfish, after spending most of their, after spending most of their life in a polluted urban watershed. Recent reports by the Associated Press concerning fraud in the American seafood markets highlights consumers' expectations that must be met by our fishery. These shellfish are in no way designated as different or tracked for future health studies. What are the expectations of a recreational shellfish community? Relative ease in shellfishing. Safe shellfish to bring home and feed to their families, and wholesome shellfish that are locally grown in Falmouth. Should also look at the importance of marketing in shellfish. Most people that consume shellfish know of Prince Edward Island mussels and Wellfleet oysters. One might suggest that Totten River coags have not yet made the cut. People come to Cape Cod to eat locally grown shellfish. This is what people in Falmouth, over the last fifteen years, have come to expect and what we have been committed to providing them. About half the towns on the Cape currently do not take part in these relay programs. According to Mashby Shellfish Constable Rick York, our neighbor to the east has no plans to take contaminated shellfish. What are some of the other public concerns? What local ponds will we put these contaminated shellfish in? When the contaminants depurate, where will they go? Our local salt ponds and estuaries support developing fish and wildlife such as illife, winter flounder, and horseshoe crabs, and shorebirds. What are the unknown environmental impacts and future consequences of taking part of this program? So we're looking for a little bit of guidance from the board this evening, or whenever you might decide to take a vote. There is obviously limited funding for propagation. At this point, we're looking for direction. Currently, we are completing construction on our new propagation center at Falmouth Harbor. We will be increasing from three to eight upwellers, tripling the capacity of the shellfish that we propagate and plant. We have also brought in a new full-time biologist to primarily do growing, and we will also have two additional part-time biologists who will be growing oysters in Little Pond. I just want to add to that, that as mentioned a little bit earlier, we've merged the department, and I had foregone myself a promotion so that we could bring on a fisheries biologist. Significant amount more money's been placed into the fishery, and it's, to the credit of the board of selectmen, it's almost unheard of to see a program, funding-wise, turn around as quickly as it has, and that's to the chairman's credit and everyone else's credit on the board, and we thank you for that. My focus has always been with wholesomeness of our shellfish. Our locally, our local shellfish have held paramount. So I head for the board this evening. Thank you.
Before I open it up to questions from the board, I do want to make a disclosure that I own a seafood restaurant which utilizes shellfish, but some questions that I wanted to ask, and I don't know who I'd ask the question to. We were talking about two cents a seed. Did you have some? You sure can, if you'd like to.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of questions. At Marine Fisheries, we take the stance concerning relays, we don't care if you do one. We don't push them out of town. We don't care if you do one or not. If you don't want to do them, that's your prerogative, and we're fine with that. If you want to do one, we'll do everything to facilitate it and make it an efficient process where you get the most of your money. The second thing was, I know that they used to go sixteen to eighteen dollars a bushel, which Chuck is right. This year, they're kind of having a bidding war. It's down twelve to fifteen dollars a bushel, so you're getting a tremendous deal. I've never seen it that low in my twenty-eight years. The other thing that I meant to say was, with the shellfish you get in a relay, you get basically a hundred percent survivability, because they're adult shellfish, ready to reproduce. You don't, sometimes you get seed, but you'll get a hundred percent survivability. I know Chuck had mentioned about a couple superfund sites in the Totten River, up in Mansfield, Attleboro Norton, and Bridgewater. We don't go anywhere near those. That's why we do so much preparatory work in the area that we do allow shellfish fund, shellfish to come from. We don't allow them anywhere near any of those superfund sites. In my twenty-eight years of doing this, in Mike's forty-four years, I don't believe we've ever gotten one call from public health, from a town, or from a harvester saying that there was a problem with relayed shellfish, that people got sick, or anything like that. Mike can correct me, but I've never, I've never heard of that in my twenty-eight years. So we, we at Marine Fisheries, we have chemists who work on this, Mike's been around for forty-four years, me twenty-eight, John thirty-plus. I mean, we've been doing this for a long, long time, and if there's any question about the public health, we won't allow it. That's why we go beyond what is required to get a relay site area to get coags from. We go well beyond that. We're not gonna have something happen that's gonna be detrimental to a town, or to the people who live in that town and harvest those shellfish. You're right, Chuck, about half the towns on the Cape Cod don't do relays, but in my talking to almost every one of them, it's not because they don't want to. It's either they don't have the finances, or for instance Brewster has very little shellfish area, Harwich has very little shellfish area. Wellfleet's paved with agriculture grants, so they basically don't have any other area. And Chatham's just got so much shellfish they don't know what to do with. So it's not that they don't want to do it, it's just that the financial can't do it, or they have no room to put it. A lot of towns, what they'll do is, the ones that do relay, will put them at the seasonally closed areas, areas that close approximately May first, so you're not closing additional area. And then by the time they're checked by the area biologists, it will open when the seasonal area would open, so you're not losing any area to shellfishermen. And again, we can't oppress on you enough. We don't care if you do a relay. We don't push anyone to do it. If you want to do it, we'll do everything in our power to make it a very good experience for you. If you don't want to, you know, it's up to you.
Chuck brought up one issue, and that was the issue of, I don't know the exact one, PCBs. Are these, shellfish check for that?
Yeah, Mike will take over that.
Good evening. I'm Mike Echegia with the Division Marine Fisheries, chief biologist, shellfish program. And before I answer the question, I just want to throw out a little background. Every aspect of the shellfish program, including contaminated relays, is regulated by the National Shelter Sanitation Program, overseen by the FDA and the ISSC, which is the Interstate Shelter Sanitation Conference, which is made up of the state regulatory agencies in all the coastal states that produce shellfish, state regulatory agencies in the receiving states, which is mostly state departments of public health, and by NOAA, National Marine Fisheries Service, NOAA, NOS, the National Ocean Service, FDA, and the EPA. And keep in mind, the EPA here, EPA, FDA, and NOAA are members, permanent members of the ISSC, you know, board of directors. This body is the body that creates all the rules and regulations that are in the NSSP that govern various aspects of the program. Now let's get to the relays. The NSSP and relay program requires that states demonstrate that they can, as a result of a relay, reduce contaminants, chemical contaminants, down to a level that are acceptable for human consumption. Massachusetts Marine Fisheries is more stringent than the NSSP. And the reason we're more stringent is that we require that the levels of contaminants are at a level that's safe for human consumption prior to the relay. FDA waives a requirement for relay effectiveness studies to demonstrate contaminant reduction if shellfish are being held in excess of sixty days. Massachusetts, at a minimum, requires ninety days plus spawning season. So if a relay begins sometime in April or early May, and you're holding it through a spawning season, which is administratively June fifteenth to September fifteenth, then the shellfish are actually being held much longer than ninety days. Some instances, some towns are holding them for over a year. One of the points that's been raised here tonight, PCBs and heavy metals, in case of PCBs, Greg mentioned earlier, that the shellfish samples that were taken this past year, and for actually for, you know, for many years preceding, in the shellfish, or at the limits of detection, well below, way below, you know, the levels that are allowed in shellfish or seafood. Same thing for metals, in the case of mercury. The mercury scores in coags that are being relayed, again, at the low limits of detection, again, well below what's allowed in consumption of shellfish. In addition to that, in quoting Devane's study in nineteen ninety-two, he stated that metals concentrations in coags are within accessible risk limits with regard to human consumption. Division Marine Fisheries has a data set that was produced by samples that we took, that were taken by Brayton Point Power Station at various locations in the river of coags that show that the levels of metals are well below anything that's considered a problem by FDA. We operate on the standards that are set by FDA and the ISSC. And all the shellfish that we're relaying, you know, meet those standards for using for human consumption are well below those standards prior to us ever allowing them to be moved.
Okay. Thank you. Just go ahead, Chuck.
Thank you. Excuse me, I just have one more statement about the PCBs. I guess it's difficult to understand in the testing that we have ample amounts of literature that suggests that there should at least be background amounts of PCB showing up in the shellfish. So even if somehow miraculously Ericlore twelve-sixty-eight is not in these coags, which defies the scientific literature review that I've done over the last, you know, eight months that sits in that box right there, there's another issue at hand, and that's what's upstream from these relay sites. And the reality of it is, is that the word testing is a broad, is a broad word, but you need to know what to test for. And when you have combined sewer overflows, and you have superfund sites, the reality of it is, is you don't know what to test for all the time. You go to the doctor, and they check cholesterol, they check blood type, they check a whole bunch of different things, but there could be other things going on with you that if you don't check the box, you never find it. The reality of it is, is that the totality of what's going on upstream of this system is broad. In Falmouth, we only have, you know, two to three towns which are our watershed. This is forty communities and cities. So I guess my statement would be is that if we don't know what's there, we don't necessarily know what to test for all the time. And in certain circumstances, like the Ericlore, it's only found, and I believe it's one to five percent of all the rivers in the world. So we were lucky to find this one. Thank you.
Chuck, one last question, if I could. They talk about roughly two cents per coag. What do we pay for seed here in Falmouth?
Seed, we buy it by the thousand, and it's the program, our order. It depends on a number of different things. There's a bid that comes out through the county, and we buy it by the thousand, and there's various sizes. We purchase approximately two million seed for approximately, in the neighborhood of fifteen thousand, and that's an estimate. I can get you exact numbers if you'd like it.
Okay. I don't, it's a rough shot. I was just wondering if we compare apples to apples.
Sure. Certainly, certainly for financial purposes only. If you're only looking at financial purposes, this would make sense, but when you take into account public health, there's a lot of issues here.
Okay. Does the board have any questions before I open up?
I have one. Was this something that had to be signed off by the CONCOM as well, or do they have hearings? I'm just curious.
Go to my door.
I do have one question. I apologize for coming in late. And I guess, why are we considering this? Just because it's available to us, is that why? Is there, is some, a huge demand for doing this?
This came up, sir, we're gonna get to you. I see a hand up there, but we have a little protocol how we're gonna go through this. We had some meetings with the shellfishermen, as well as the representatives of some of the local businesses, meaning the shellfish purveyor sales. The IDI... The DIC had attended those meetings, and there was some input from those folks that they wanted this board to consider this. And that's how this subject came up. Remember in the fall, we had a meeting, and we didn't have representatives from the state. So tonight's meeting is informational. We're not making any decisions this evening. If the board sees fit to move forward, to look at this and analyze this in any form or fashion, we continue to do so. But we had a vast group of the commercial fishermen who thought that the monies that were appropriated at town meeting would be better spent to provide this seed stock, meaning that it provides the shellfish, that continues to multiply. So that's why we're looking at it this evening, and that's how this subject came up. We had a subcommittee meeting, and we had invited these folks from the state to come down. They made the presentation, that was with the town manager and all of these other folks. So we decided that we would move forward to bring the board in, and have a balanced approach, meaning bring Chuck's group in, so that they could provide input on the other side. Okay? Yes?
One thing at Marine Fisheries, what we say, if you have financial, if you have the finances, to do a relay and seed, because relay will give you a short-term boost and long-term, and seed would be long-term. It's tough to equate 2 cents a coag, which you can probably get, you know, 18 to 20 cents at market for, with seed, because you have basically 100% survivability on the relays, and you can have tremendous mortality on seed, because it's going from stuff the size of a grain of sand up to adult size, and that's, it's just, anything can happen to it on its way up there. Basically, once again, I know Chuck was big on public health, and we absolutely are also. I mean, and I'll just reiterate, in all the years that Mike, myself, John, et cetera have been doing this, we've never heard of anything, any public health problems, and we get reviewed by US FDA, you know, state public health. I mean, everybody comes in and looks at every single thing we do with a magnifying glass, so.
I need to ask you one question.
Sure.
We talk about folks in Falmouth would be buying this product. Folks in Falmouth currently buying this product, maybe from other municipalities?
I can't say for sure, but I would guarantee you that people in this room who eat coags have been eating coags that have come from the Taunton River, because they sell them to dealers, who then sell them to restaurants in town, et cetera, so that that shellfish goes on the market. Bourne is a big, big player, they do about 1,000 to 1,500 bags every single year. Barnstable, anywhere from 2,000 to 4,000 bushels a year. And all that shellfish, because it is certified, harvestable after we do our tests, that just goes through all the different markets. So I would guarantee you that everybody here, and probably in your restaurants, sir, that they're probably shellfish that have perched themselves from the Taunton River, and they take on the characteristics of the waters in Bourne and Barnstable, among other towns, and that they're perfectly safe and perfectly fine to eat. And people probably don't even know you're eating it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, I wanted to mention that we have a long, long history here in Falmouth, almost well over 30 years of having our groundwater contaminated, and our soils contaminated by emanation of chemicals from the mass military reservation, that were deposited there well over the years, beginning, you know, World War II and beyond. And the military has spent an enormous amount of money, millions and millions of dollars, to make our drinking water clean here in Falmouth, and also to remediate, in a sense, not only the water, but the soils. And soil monitoring is still ongoing, even after 30 years. So I guess my question is, is there any testing or monitoring of the sediment in the Taunton River? And is there any type of remediation going on in the Taunton River to either, to improve the sediment and to improve the quality of the water?
I think what everybody has to keep in mind here tonight is, we're talking about shellfish, and we're talking about the condition of those shellfish, the contaminants in the shellfish. And we're not talking about, you know, contaminants and sediments. You can look at sediments in a lot of places. I can do the same in Falmouth, and get high levels of one contaminant or another. And there have been closures at times in Falmouth, you know, because of sediment contaminants, particularly years ago with Mercop, which was a bottom paint. And it contained mercury, and it contained copper, and there were actually closures in Falmouth because of mercury, not only in the sediments, but mercury in the shellfish. Now, what's important here is the contaminants that are in the water column that the shellfish are taking up associated with their feeding process, not the contaminants that are in the sediments that are usually chemically sequestered, they're not available to the shellfish, or they're not available in a form that, you know, the shellfish can accumulate. So it's kind of hard to generalize about this. What we're testing in the Taunton River is the shellfish, coags in this case, in the early spring before they spawn for PCBs, because that's when they would have the highest body burden at any time of year, all right? Just prior to their spawning, they've had a whole year to accumulate this. Now, when we're testing these shellfish, which is, you know, composite samples, about 30 shellfish per sample, you know, from a minimum of three different locations, right where they're harvesting, you're getting levels of PCB that are at the very lowest limits of detection, you can hardly find. Now, we're talking here, you know, parts per billion, all right? With a standard that's in parts per million. So, you know, extremely low levels. So what's in the sediment here is not important, it's what's in the shellfish, and what the shellfish are taking up. There's a lot of chemicals that may be involved into release into a watershed, but they're not accumulated by shellfish, or there are no standards for them in food. So what we're looking at is, there are standards set for in foods, and in particular, you know, seafood or shellfish. So that's really what's important. Same with the metals. With mercury, the major source of mercury in the Taunton River was shut down in 1972. The levels of mercury in the sediments have gone way down from what they were back in the early 70s. Again, the levels are so low that they're at the lower limits of detection. And so what you're really going to need to be concerned about here is levels of contaminants that are in the shellfish.
Okay. Just a follow-up question. Is there any anticipation that at a certain point in time, the shellfish will be cleaned because this, the contamination that's there now will resolve itself at some point?
Well, what do you mean by cleaned?
I mean, is there any plan to clean up the Taunton River? Or is it expected it will happen over time?
It's ongoing.
Just normally?
It's ongoing over time. There's upgrades to sewer treatment plants, there's chemical pre-treatment, sewerage from industrial sources is being pre-treated before it goes into the sewerage treatment plants, so that these things are no longer being released, you know, into the watershed from the sewerage treatment plants. There's probably more coming in from road runoff and from rainfall than there is from any of the plants, but you've got the same thing going on here in Falmouth. The groundwater going into Lockway Bay is 10 to 100 times higher in mercury than what comes in out of the rain and from road runoff. I mean, this whole paper's published, you know, to that effect. So you're dealing with contaminants everywhere from multiple sources, but they're, you know, very, very low levels. And again, I think the thing to keep in mind here is what the contaminant level is of the shellfish at the point that they're being transplanted, which is well below what's allowed for human consumption, you know, by the FDA.
One last question. Chuck mentioned that we only test for certain things. He used a great analogy, how you go to a doctor and you have a blood test. But a doctor typically will do a complete blood chemistry, which covers everything. Is that, do you test, yes, no, for all the possible contaminants?
We test for those contaminants that we have reason to believe are entering into the system for which FDA has, and the NSSP have, levels for, in food. Now, you know, EPA has a list of 126 chemical contaminants of concern, but most, all of those chemical contaminants of concern are used for impacts on aquatic life and human health and recreation, and are water standards. They're not standards for edible tissue. And so there are no standards for these in edible tissue. Many of those contaminants, shellfish wouldn't accumulate. You know, whatever the level was in the water, you know, they might have in their tissue because they're bathed, but they don't biorecumerate. So you really have to talk about, you know, particular chemicals. A lot of these things, if you were testing for them, you know, public health, or FDA, or even EPA would say, there's no, there's no standard for human consumption. And so, you know, what's the point? And a lot of these you can find from other sources.
One other question, if I may. You mentioned, or your biologist mentioned, that typically at the minimum it's six months for this product to purge itself. Is the product tested, or is there just a timeframe on that? In other words, do we send that product out to test to make sure, take some samples to make sure that it's purged itself?
If, if, as we're saying, the, it meets the standards for chemical contaminants prior to relaying, there's no point then to test for it at the end of the relay. The only thing that we're testing for at the end of the relay, because we're required to do it under the NSSP, is for bacteria, because what we're saying going in is that those shellfish, when they leave the Taunton River, are bacterially contaminated, and they may have, you know, viruses. So the period of time that them lapses from the time that they're relayed until the time we open them, you know, for harvesting, is well beyond what's needed to purge of bacteria or viral contaminants. But we have to test under the NSSP to demonstrate that they don't have, you know, bacterial indicator agents. So that's what we're testing for. If we're moving something that is well below, you know, consumption levels of, say, mercury or PCB, prior to relaying, then why would we be testing it at the end of, you know, 90 days or six months after it's been transplanted into Falmouth, you know, for PCB and mercury? It makes no sense.
I think it does make sense. You're calling the shellfish contaminated when it's being relayed, but then you're saying we're guaranteed it's not contaminated because it's below the level of contamination.
We're calling it contaminated with bacteria and bacterial contaminants. What I've said very plainly here tonight is, we're taking the position based on our testing, that it's not chemically contaminated prior to relaying.
And we test it for that bacteria.
Okay. Chuck, what is it I'm going to get to?
To be very brief, there was a question about shellfish, and if you, at this point, 15 years being the last relay that we've taken, if you purchased a license in the town of Falmouth, or in a restaurant, you were to look at a tag that has one of the Falmouth growing areas, you could be pretty secure in knowing that those shellfish were not from the Taunton River, unless they were very large ashtray-sized coags. So if you do hold a license now, they are locally grown. Secondly, again, I can't reiterate enough, I do stand behind my literature review, and it seems a bit of an anomaly that it's not in there, but I stand by my literature review, which is all cited from professional journals. And then the last piece is that, I just wanted to make sure, there were a number of, a few different groups I know that would like to speak tonight, but the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce and the Atlantic Oyster had some paperwork, which I can pass along to the board from some time ago, but there's other individuals who are interested, those could not make it tonight.
Betsy, do you want to speak? And then I'm going to open it up to folks in the public here.
Betsy Glutfelder. I just have a couple of questions about, to the state biologist.
Sure, you can address those through me.
I will.
Okay.
One is, what other heavy metals are tested? And is it just the meat that's tested, or are the shells tested as well? Because shells of shellfish have a significant amount of organic material, and presumably if they're left, or people put them back in the water, and they have contaminants, then those will be re-entering. So I just want to know, one, what other heavy metals are being tested, and if the shells are being tested.
Okay. Could I get one of you folks maybe to, you've got to come to the microphone though.
We're testing edible portions, we're not testing shell. And it's 14 heavy metals. Cadmium, copper, iron, lead, mercury, nickel, vanadium, zinc, aluminum, arsenic, chromium, cobalt, manganese.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions, comments, that'd like to make this evening?
I'm Dan Murphy. I live in East Falmouth, and I'm a member of the Falmouth Rod and Gun Club. I am speaking tonight on behalf of the Falmouth Rod and Gun Club Board of Directors and members. Two years ago, the Falmouth Rod and Gun Club sent a letter to the Board of Selectmen, CCing the Town Administrator, Mr. Susso, and Department of Natural Resources Acting Director, Mr. Martenson, supporting Mr. Martenson's concerns that the town not allow the importation of likely contaminated shellfish from the Taunton River. The Falmouth Rod and Gun Club continues to hold that position, that the town not allow the importation of likely contaminated shellfish into our waters. I'd like to present a copy of the original letter for the record.
That's great.
Thank you.
Greg? You put it in this file.
Good evening. Gregory Razor, Harvard Master and incoming director. I was hoping that Rick York could attend tonight, but he has his own town meeting, because he likes to tell a story about the last time Mashby did the contaminated relay. He actually tells a story that he went out to test the area at the end of the deprecation period, and he could not find the shellfish that were put there. I have a very serious concern with our ability to enforce the closures of contaminated shellfish. Chuck mentioned in his presentation, a recent case that the Department of Natural Resources was involved in, that has not been resolved, and I don't see any movement towards a resolution in that matter. We also hear a lot of the environmental police enforcing shellfish regulations. Well, I've been around the waterfront in Falmouth for a long time now, and I can tell you, we get environmental enforcement from the EPOs, but it has nothing to do with shellfish. Unless we specifically call and ask for their assistance on shellfish, I think they'd be the first ones to admit they just don't enforce shellfish regulations in the town of Falmouth. So that would fall on the Department of Natural Resources or the new incoming MBS department. And, you know, I have reservations that we will not be able to prevent contaminated shellfish from getting to either the marketplace or even the dinner table before the stuff cleans itself.
And that would be all you called there, that the areas that are closed now? Well, I'm just sending, I'm just, one question.
We're going to have to go through the chair, and we have to use the microphone.
Mr. Selectman, Madam Selectman, I'm taking a different twist on this whole problem. And my question to you is, would if, there's a possibility that we found And my question to you is, would if, there's a possibility that we found a good crop of large quahogs within striking distance of West Falmouth, and that way we could get our own quahogs, we do not know for sure what the concentration is, but Steve Aubrey and I, doing a shellfish survey, and also for eelgrass, came upon a huge crop of large quahogs offshore, out of the area of the common possibility of a commercial shellfish and, because there's no dragging allowed. But I'd want you to understand that there's hope in another avenue. I always look at the positive side, because I have a great deal of respect for the Division Marine Fisheries, and I have a good, very good respect for the fishermen. And I know that they're looking for a new venue to increase their profits. Thank you.
So I, if I could ask a follow-up question, George?
Yes.
Are you saying that we would do our own relay in that scenario?
I would say, we want to think about this. What is the possibility of doing that? We also have to verify for sure what the density of this crop is offshore. But it is in no way anywhere near New Bedford or Taunton River, it's within our waters. And probably very few people know about this.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? Yes?
Dave Brown. I've been a commercial fisherman in town for about 30 years. Just a couple of things I'd like to touch on. What, the advantage to the relay isn't putting the quahogs in and pulling them back out six months later for the immediate harvest. The advantage is the biomass, the spawning stock, getting the natural sets. That's what we don't have anymore. We've eliminated all the biomass. We started, like a lot of towns, we switched over to trying to grow seed, and most of the towns have gone back to doing both. They grow seed, they do the relay. Unfortunately, here in Falmouth, the last time that we had a successful grow out of seed, Paul Montague was awarded. So that's, what, 13 years ago? Since then, we haven't grown anything to viable size that would make it maybe, I'm gonna be generous and say we're getting between 5 and 10 percent that are living. So we're throwing a lot of money away right now. And the Board of Selectmen was really generous in backing the shellfishery. They came up with the money, they hired a tech, but if we put all our eggs in one basket, we could lose everything year after year after year. A couple other things I wanted to just touch on. And that's, you know, Chuck mentioned the superfund sites in the Taunton River. We have superfund sites right here that are upriver of all our estuaries. And that doesn't mean the shellfish we're digging in Great Pond, Green Pond, West Falmouth Harbor are contaminated. In McGansett, the superfund site is, what, three miles away? It's pretty close. It's a lot closer than it is in the Taunton River. PCBs, as Mr. Hickey mentioned, there are levels that are non-detectable. The shellfish that are coming from the Taunton River are contaminating, are bacterial contamination. It's fecal coliform bacteria. It's the same reason that West Falmouth Harbor is closed right now, Great Bay is closed right now, Green Pond is closed right now. It's all fecal coliform. That's the reason these ponds are closed. This is something that happens right here in Falmouth every year. We're talking about growing oysters in Little Pond, which is closed for fecal coliform bacteria. We're gonna take those oysters out of there and transfer them into another pond for consumption six months later. There's, you know, you're talking, you know, it's apples and apples here. With, you know, I understand the concerns about sediments in the Taunton River, and Chuck brought up dredging. You can't compare a shellfish dredge to a dredge that goes in and dredges a harbor. A shellfish dredge is going down six to eight inches. A dredge that's dredging sediments from a harbor is going down 10 feet, 12 feet, 14 feet, 16 feet. They're not comparable at all. There's nothing the same between the two. A lot of its material was from places that aren't the Taunton River. I mean, we brought up, what, Sarasota, Florida, places that, you know, they may have problems down there. It doesn't mean they're a problem in the Taunton River. A lot of the people who, like the gentleman from, from the Rod and Gun Club, they supported George Souza very much. George Souza, his whole propagation program was relay quahogs. This isn't something new. What's new is us not doing it in Falmouth. This only stopped about 12 years ago. It had gone on in Falmouth for over 50 years prior to that. What's new is us not doing it. And we haven't had a set, a natural set of quahogs since we stopped doing the relay. We had a multimillion-dollar industry 13 years ago. Now, we can't get, you can't, you don't have 10 guys making a living full-time. That's how bad it is. It went like this from when we were doing the relay to like this when we stopped. And just one more thing. I know Chuck says he's concerned about metals and pollution. We picked Falmouth Harbor to put our new upwellers in. There's no place in town that is more contaminated than Falmouth Harbor. The area by the bulkhead that he's gonna put it in has much higher metal counts than the area they're taking the shellfish from in the Taunton River. I, you know, I can't, I can't understand the reasoning behind that one.
Just a few brief things if I may. The area where we're growing the shellfish, the shellfish were actually sent to the same lab that the State Division Marine Fisheries uses. Be happy to provide any of those findings that we did. We've actually been increasing our testing throughout the town, looking at other areas as well. But anyways, as a result of it, we sent the shellfish out. They were tested by, or they were examined by reputable scientists. And indeed, Falmouth Harbor is actually significantly cleaner than you would imagine for growing shellfish. And again, I have got the statistics to show that. Well, another thing I'd like to point out, if I could drop this off with you guys, about 100 years ago, Belding did a report for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and it's very interesting if you look at this, and I'm gonna just read something. In Belding's report, it said, "Falmouth, there's practically no quahog industry in Falmouth. Hardly 100 bushels are dug annually, and those only for home consumption. A few quahogs are perhaps shipped by the oystermen. Quahogs are found mostly scattered in quantities over large areas of Waco Bay and small quantities to the north and west side of Great Pond, comprising a total of 400 acres. Not all this ground is capable of producing quahogs, but many parts could produce good harvests." And if you look at this, there's dash marks all the way across Falmouth. Every other community has shellfish in it, but Falmouth had virtually nothing that year. And that was indicative of the time. So I think the takeaway message here is that if you look at the recent catch reports and the sales, we're up in the $400,000 to $500,000 range, and even more in some years of what we're, of what we're just doing commercially. So albeit, we can certainly do more with our resource, we were certainly underfunded for a number of years. Our propagation went down to 13,000. This year, it's 109,000. So we were, you know, we were given kind of duct tape and bubble gum, and now we're asked to bring it to a brand-new level. And I'm gonna be honest with you, it's not something that we can do overnight, but I certainly think we can get there in a few years. And I have the most confidence in our fisheries biologist. And I'll drop this Belding report off with you.
Can I ask you a question, Chuck, before I, one of the things that the fishermen proposed was, you know, a balanced approach, meaning do the seed as well as the potential for some relay. Is there a location in this community that we could test something like this, that we could have great control over? Following up on what Greg has to say, an area where we could actually, you know, make sure that we could observe that there was no poaching, that the, you know, the product wouldn't be touched for that period of time? An area where we could test something like this to see if it works? Just proposing a question.
There's certainly areas in the town that we could test where we could do within-town relays and go ahead and check on that. We'd be happy to. We could, you know, come back for a report with you guys with some standing crop surveys in a few months. Might be an option, but certainly we'd be happy to look at our current resource we have in town and look at options within town.
Okay. Yes. I'm gonna get to you folks. Go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Ed Dewitt. I'm the Executive Director of the Association to Preserve Cape Cod. I'm also a Falmouth resident. A year ago, APCC wrote to the Secretary of Environmental Affairs and expressed our concern over the contaminated relay shellfish program. And basically, we had two complaints, that the program is not consistent with either the goal of maintaining safe and reliable food supply, or is it really promoting the best management practices in fisheries? My first job was in fisheries. I was at the Point Judith Fisherman's Co-op in Rhode Island while my wife was going to library school at URI. I think many of you know her as the librarian, and that's how we got there. But I learned two lessons at Point Judith. One was that good quality seafood brings a premium. And we were able, on average, to get about six cents a pound for finfish, and even more for quahogs than particularly New Bedford, which was our largest competitor, a much bigger competitor than we were. But there is a premium for freshness. And I think you're beginning to see this in places, and I think Mr. Martenson referred to this, in terms of wellfleet oysters in the branding of seafood. And if you ever want to brand Falmouth quahogs, I think that you're gonna have to look very hard at this program and how it interrelates to that. The second thing I learned at Point Judith is that ecosystem-based fisheries is the appropriate way to manage fisheries. And I think Mr. Martenson has expressed a great interest in working in this way. I think Mr. Hampson's here. I think he's one who's very much into ecosystem-based fisheries management. You can do a much, much better job than you're doing in your shellfish management, but I think it's going to take a little bit of attention and a little bit of support from the Board of Selectmen to the people who you have and even, you've charged to carry out those responsibilities. I think this is a great asset for Falmouth, and I hope you make not the nickel-and-dime decision as to how much you save or how much you make, but what the ultimate investment is down the road and what good quality shellfish would do. I'm sure, Mr. Murphy, if you had on your menu formerly contaminated after your quahog chowder, you wouldn't sell a lot of chowder. And that's what's going on. Thank you.
And I think it's important to note, Mr. Dewitt, that the Board of Selectmen has made a major commitment to our shellfishing industry. We supported the hiring of a shellfish technician. We went from roughly $12,000 to $109,000 in a year for the budget. So that's not an area where the Board of Selectmen has been remiss in supporting the shellfishery.
And I applaud you.
It's just a balanced approach, and we need to continue to listen to all folks. If we take a one-sided issue and we walk down and don't listen to both sides of an issue, then shame on us, because I think we need to be as educated as possible as we move forward. Yes?
My name is Mitchell Mondino. I'm an ex-commercial shellfisherman in this town. Because of the very decline that these fishermen are talking about, it's not worth it. It's like living on welfare. You've lowered us down to welfare living. We used to have a standard of living. Now we're living on welfare. I would say to the Selectmen, because some of you seem to be as old as me, but you don't remember what you used to be here. We used to have three dredging boats in Buzzetts Bay. These were big boats that cut at least 100 bushels of quahogs per day. This industry is gone because of the '68 oil spill. Now, this has been laying ferro since 1968. All of Buzzetts Bay, nothing's been done with it. State's not gonna give us no money because it was before suits. So we're sitting on some ferro that we can't, we can't even do nothing for, because we need your permission to do something, to even approach an idea. We need your permission. We can't do it on our own. You got all of Buzzetts Bay that you could take this relay. And again, you'd be taking it from the water of Buzzetts Bay and putting it right back in Buzzetts Bay, because Taunton River Estuary is a part of Buzzetts Bay. Okay? So if you want to talk about just taking the quahogs and keeping basically where they are, we could do that. Falmouth has got so much water, so much area compared to everybody else in the state of Massachusetts. We don't have an excuse not to do a couple of different things. Again, a simple, simple thing that I've proposed to our department is frayed rope. This is what catches the baby quahogs when they spawn, so they don't go to shore and die, so they fall down in the column. Very cheap, very cheap technology. Been proposing this for 20 years. I don't know, again, I'll agree with Chuck. Give us a plan, anything. We're waiting for it. That's all the shellfishing community wants, is something to work at. We've watched everything just go down the tube, where, again, the upwelling was the Shellfish Association. It was our money that brought the first upwell to this town. We're the ones that did it all to prove that we could do it, and the expectation that we were gonna get direct grants from the town, because we proved that we could do it. Everybody thought we were gonna fall on our faces. Oh, we weren't smart enough, like you say. People are gonna steal all the babies. All of these things never happened. All we had was people coming by, asking, hey, what you doing? Wow, that was great. And on top of it, we got an oyster set inside our upwellers. It was just a buy thing. Now, I don't know. I heard that you gave us a lot of money, but if you, as everybody knows, if you just throw money at something and just spend it, and nothing good comes out of it, then that's all you've done. You've just thrown the money at it, and we don't get nothing. Me, I'm, these guys are talking quahogs. I want to see the soft-shell clams come back. I've watched this whole town get wiped out. Do you know how many bushels of soft-shells? Like you said, you're a restaurant owner. You used to get them from Falmouth. Do you get them from Falmouth any longer? I don't think so. These are the things that we're addressing. Again, perfect example was water quality. 20 years ago, that's what, I remember the association got a $50,000 grant that we were supposed to apply each year to wastewater, to set up plants to get rid of wastewater. This is gone. You know, to set up source, to sort the areas, to get rid of the road runoff, so these areas would be cleaner, water quality being cleaner, the environment being better, like everybody's saying. I mean, every pond has a plan that I've heard in years. I mean, we've got to take at least a couple. Try at least, like you're saying, try this here, try that here. Let people compete against one another, and let's go with the person that's right. Yeah, I love the money, but we need to spend it right. And I mean, the state, Mike Hickey, yeah, you're right. He's been there since the beginning. And he's trying to explain to you, it's the water quality that's about clams. It's not about the dirt that they're in, or, like you say, Falmouth Harbor was, when we fishermen first got, pulled quahogs out of here, none of us would eat any of those things, but yes, they were sold in. We never heard a complaint from anybody for, of one clam that came out of there. I mean, and that was done because the town, town wanted to do something. They wanted to prove that you could open an area like that. They sorted the area, and boom, they opened it. Everybody here that's a shellfisherman never thought they'd see the day. Never thought they'd see the day that we'd be fishing in Falmouth Harbor, and we got to, because again, people got behind it, like you said, and did something and did it. So it can be done. And I mean, again, I'm for soft-shell clams. You took care of the hard-shell clams, producing them in upwellers and everything, but there's soft-shell clams that a lot of people would like to see come back into these towns. Meaning, I'd like to see one pond set aside and bring it back for soft-shell plant, clams. I'm sorry.
Thank you very much for your comment. Can I ask a question to the state? Is there a permitting process if Falmouth in fact wanted to do its own relay dredge offshore? And would the state work with the town, something of that nature?
It depends on what you're calling off, sure. I mean, the town needs a permit from the state to do any shellfish movement, even in clean water. It's called propagation permit. Those are issued annually.
Those are issued annually to the towns, you know, upon request. So if town is doing anything, you know, whether it's seed from a hatchery or transplanting within town, or doing a contaminated relay within the town or from out of town, you know, a permit's required. So, yeah. The, I don't know which bed of Cohogs is being referred to. I know that there's an area where there's Cohogs out in Buzzetts Bay, some of which is in town of Falmouth waters, and some of it overlaps into some other adjacent towns. So, you know, obviously, you could only do it, you know, within the town of Falmouth. And a permit would be required.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Smolowicz, and then, I'm sorry.
That's Chuck Height, not my height. Ron Smolowicz, Coopamassett Farm. I've been involved in shellfishing for about 45 years, dredge designer, done aquaculture, done commercial harvests. I think there's a place in town for relay, but I don't think we have the process in place now to really do what we need to do here, which is we have to restore our estuaries. And it's currently under a wastewater process. We need to bring back the shellfish advisory panel that we used to have and work out a shellfish plan for this community. We need to restore the bottoms of the ponds. We need to decide what shellfish we want to grow in which ponds. There's certainly a place for bringing in shellfish. As far as the issue of contaminated, to me, the food safety rules are pretty wacky. They're going to probably shut down my farm because I grow chickens in the same quarter-mile that I grow lettuce, under the new law. So I'm not worried too much about the shellfish. We can monitor it. There's nothing that prevents us from getting some clams, Cohogs, from the Taunton River, grind them up, shells and all, and see what the contamination levels are in, as far as heavy metals. I mean, we could do our own thing. What we need to do is, we need to develop the process. We can't, you know, when I wanted to look at the little pond thing, I had to work through our wastewater manager. I mean, that's ridiculous. If our goal is to get these highly productive estuaries back into production, then we need a system to do that. And we need to, the people that know how to do that, our fishermen, our scientists, our growers, need to work together and develop the plan for growing Cohogs, softshells, and oysters. And then we could avoid the $600 million that we're going to dump down a sewer. Okay?
Thank you. Go right ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, I guess I'll sort of tie a couple of these things together. Mr. Smolowicz did a fine job in what he had to say. And I would like to say, pay attention to Chuck Martenson's comments about PCBs and contaminants. I would like to say, pay attention to Mr. DeWitt and to Mr. Hampson with what they've had to say. And to the gentleman who is a shellfisher person, who said that there used to be shellfish, and he thought that was because you had the relays. And I would say, that's because our water was in better condition then. And Mr. Smolowicz has said, we need to clean up the water, and you won't have productive waters unless we continue to work diligently to clean up the water in our coastal estuaries. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else? Yes, I can't see who.
Yeah, Jake, we're local shellfisherman. So first, I want to say, the money, that's a great thing. You know, how you use it is the success and the not success. The seed program we've had hasn't worked, not even close. They did a, even, they did a fairly large one, probably three years ago in Wacoit Bay. I haven't seen any of it. They put them in and they were pretty good size, but they're grown to survive. You put them in the environment, and you have no idea, because they've been nursed. These Cohogs from the Taunton River have been targeted by nature. They've survived the whole thing. They're ready to spawn. These guys aren't telling you stories. They're giving you good information. They've been working on these surveys. They've got their hands dirty doing them. I believe that this is just rhetoric. You can find something wrong with anything. A 100-year-old paper written, I mean, Montmore reconstrucks itself every 100 years. It doesn't even look like the same place. In a short period of time, the cut has been recut. I don't know, three, three times at least? Let's see. The seed, you know, we found this out, it's two, it's two or three years before it's legal size. 2 million seed at 50 percent. I mean, we, I went over this before, you know, I mean, I guess it's 4 million seed. The cost is astronomical for it, the care of it, the time. By the time you know it's either going to work or it's not going to work, three years have gone by. And, you know, I mean, I own a house here. I mean, if I can't make a living anymore, what am I going to do? Sell it? I'm 58 years old, I'm going to sell my house, because I can't make enough money in this town. You know, the relay stuff is just that. It's so productive. You put it in the water, when Cohogs come out of the water, they warm up, and when they go back in, they cool back down. And that almost, right there, makes them spawn. I've been to a, I've been to a class, Dave Brown went to the same class in Woodsville. We, you know, it was a two-week, eight-hour-a-day class on growing shellfish. And I learned a lot there. I've been a fisherman for 35 years. I fished in four towns. I fished in Bourne and the relays we had there. And I saw, you know, wardens that didn't take care of it going in, you know, for whatever reason they didn't. You know, they didn't put it in deep enough water. You know, so it takes a lot of care. You know, like I said, personally, I think it's, I think it's so clear what to do here. I just, because the point of it is, is even Wacoit Bay that just opened up, there's nothing. I mean, there's Green Pond, Great Pond. I don't really go on Bourne's pond, I'm a boat guy. All the, all the spots in McGansett, there is just nothing there. I mean, a guy who's really good and will work them eight hours, and I'm not, this isn't easy work. I mean, personally, I work, I mean, I got nicknames, you know what I mean? And for me to go on a spot in eight hours and bang out a day's pay and barely pay my bills, it just keeps getting worse and worse and worse and going down. You know, and I was an opponent against the oyster thing. I mean, I've been, like I said, I fished in Bourne. We have wicked oysters in Bourne. There used to be grants in Bourne. There's a lot of deep water in Bourne. I've been fishing wild oysters for 35 years. I fished in Bourne, Falmouth, which doesn't have oysters in these upper ponds where they're trying to grow oysters. They don't live there. You can't put them there, they won't live. I've said it, and it's been proven. They can't grow them. There's a grant right now who's trying to grow oysters. They're not, it's not working out. It's just the way it is. And I wish it was, because I used to like getting 30, 40, 50 cents, 75 cents a piece for them. But that's, that's not a reality right now. And that's, you know, unfortunate, but that's just the way it is. You know, again, a boom to the economy. We're really scraping. And when I say scraping, I mean, you're going to, you're going to lose this permanently. And the 97 percent of, or whatever it is, 95 percent of recreational diggers, they're going out, they're taking them, you know, they're basically camping out to get a half a peck. I mean, they're not, I would assume that most of them probably have bought permits in other towns to go catch shellfish, because it's a day-long thing for them to get a peck of Cohogs. That's what they're trying to get. The plan I had was that you take the money you have now, you take 75 percent of that and buy relay Cohogs. You put those in Green Pond, Great Pond, Hill River East, and the north side of Wacoit Bay. And, you know, this goes against a lot of the people I fish with every day, but I don't really care about that. Okay? So you put the ones that you can't police in deep water. The places that you can police, you put them in shallow water. So you can drive, you can drive by and see a guy stop, and you can arrest him for digging, you know? You know, so everyone gets a share of that. And then I thought, you know, when you, and you know what I did? I lost one of the pages. So, okay, so anyways, then you take, with whatever you're spending, okay? You're spending 100 percent of your money, okay, 75 is relay. 15 percent is the already-grown Cohog, large Cohogs you can get. The state knows, you can buy these things. You put those in the southern Wacoit Bay. Okay? Because that's, that's our own way out, and it's open in the summertime. And you take the last 10 percent, what Chuck can grow, put all those in a family area, and just see what is really coming out of this. Because, you know, you're growing this stuff in a polluted environment. I don't care. I, now, it's polluted. I mean, it's closed by the state permanently. That's, that's, that's Falmouth Harbor, you know? So you're growing them, I mean, last year, the supposed hurricane, they got dumped in Falmouth Harbor. There wasn't a hurricane or anything, you know? So is waste. I know where you got water. Christ, I'm so dry, can't talk. And I believe you have to have fishermen do this. I mean, there's, you can't hire a guy to go out with scuba tanks and swim back and forth and know the bottom. I mean, I know it. There's guys that are in the room that know it more than I do, because I've fished in other towns. You've got hundreds of years of experience. Again, like the state, trying to give you good advice, and you really got to, you know, you got to do what's right. You could, in my opinion, you could save it, or you could wait three years and find out what you've, what you've been trying to do for the past 13 years hasn't worked. Yeah, let's see. You know, I guess, I guess, like I said, too, one of the bottom lines is, you're not really trying to bang for the buck. I mean, these, these things get eaten every day. There's pollution in every single thing. Before they take them, they're clean, clean enough to eat. Every pond that we close, we close for the exact same reason that they're closing this, you know? They test for the heavy metals. You know, I've dug in, I've dug in, in Falmouth Harbor, I mean, all along those four yards, there's four or five four yards of Falmouth Harbor. The water comes up clean. That right there's got to tell you that Taunton River probably comes up clean, even though there's some, some things you don't want to look at. But they're miles and miles away. Yeah, let's see. I guess the other thing was, was the success rate of what we have now is absolutely dismal. I haven't seen a warden on the water at least two years, probably a year or two years. You know, that, to me, that's a lack of concern. They had a closure in Great Pond, they opened it up, it didn't pass. They had to be called by the state, that's closed. They had to rush down and have everyone throw the Cohogs in. To me, that is a lack of caring, commitment, and expertise in this field. And I feel our biggest problem, number one, is the warden. He doesn't know.
Stay on topic.
Huh?
Let's stay on topic.
Well, I am, because that's one of the problems, though, is he's completely against this relay. And the success he's having on trying to fix this is just plain not working. And I mean, you're really, you know, maybe it's a battle between me and him, and I don't think it really is, because I've seen this go on and on and on, and I've seen all the stuff. And it's, like I said, it's rhetoric, in my opinion. And I have a pretty good base, you know? And I have a real big concern. And the last time I was at a meeting like this, I got laughed at. And, you know, I'm going broke, and I don't think it's funny. And I think you could do a lot of good with this money, you know, or you could just do the same thing with it, it's just more money. And I really think you have to really try and do what's right. And I think it's clear. I think they've given you the best plan. There's three ways of doing this. You consolidate your money between those things like this. That's, that's my opinion.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to wrap this up. Is there anyone else that had any last comments? Brief comments? Okay, again? Yes, go ahead, Mr. Hegel, I'll let you finish.
Just a couple of closing remarks. This report was made available, the report to the ABCC was made available to the town administrator beginning of April, who was going to make it available to the board. I hope the board got it.
They'll have it.
They'll have it. And I hope that you had a chance to read it. And if you didn't, I hope that you do. It'll take you about a half an hour, and I think it answers a lot of the questions that have been raised here tonight. Basically, you've got three tools in shellfish propagation. You can depend on natural sets and rotating, you know, open-closing areas. You can do relays, or you can do, you know, hatchery seed, or you can do some combination of the two. One of the things that was mentioned here tonight was enforcement. And so the concern about being able to enforce state closures in areas that were closed as a result of relaying. I think that if that is a valid concern, then we wouldn't want you to do the relays. I can tell you that right now. On the other hand, if that is a real concern, I know that the town is considering doing oyster propagation in areas that are contaminated and going to be involved in relaying oysters from those contaminated areas into clean areas. And if enforcement of contaminated closures is a problem, then maybe you ought not to be considering that. So this is a tool. It's optional. We facilitate it. If the town wants to do it, that's fine. If the town doesn't want to do it, you know, that's fine. But bear in mind, we're scrutinized by the FDA, the EPA, as part of the ISSC, the ISSC, by the State Department of Public Health, and their Food Protection Program, and their Bureau of Environmental Health, and also by DEEP. If this was a problem in terms of contaminants in human health, none of these agencies would be allowing us to do this. Thank you. Good night.
Actually, and I don't know if you're the person to ask, but the, the shellfish we're talking about taking from the Taunton River, is the Taunton River seeded, or is this just naturally occurring there?
This is naturally occurring in the Taunton River. It's just a, a, shellfish populations are huge in terms of density and in terms of amount of area. The amount of relaying that goes on, when it puts a small den in it, the, the area retains the larvae through their 10- to 14-day cycle. And it's purportedly as bad as the Taunton River is in terms of its environment. It's, it's an amazing incubator for Cohogs and for oysters.
So what is it, then, that, I guess, is good about the Taunton River for shellfish that's not good in the Falmouth Waters? Obviously, we seem to have a problem with, with growing shellfish here, at least naturally. We have to seed it ourselves. Are we overfished? Is it just bad environmental conditions? Do we have any ideas to why? We're complaining about the Taunton River and, and the issues associated with it, but obviously, something is going right there, and it's not going right here.
Yeah, I wish I had the answer to that.
Okay.
I'd be writing papers.
Well, I'd like to specifically thank the Department of Marine Fisheries for coming here this evening. I appreciate you sending as many folks as you did to answer as many questions as we had. I'm sure the Department of Natural Resources will continue to work with the town manager and continue to come up with some potential possibilities as we move forward. Again, there is no action being taken this evening, but we would hope that we would come back in the near future with some kind of plan. That was a good word, term that was thrown around tonight. You know, when we authorized that amount of money this year at town meeting, we surely hoped that we had a plan to spend it. And we want to be able to continue to fund that at that type of level. So we need to be able to make sure that we're mapping a future for town meeting, as well as the Finance Committee and everybody else involved. So with that being said, we still have a lot of work to do. I appreciate the support of the Division of Marine Fisheries, and I know that we'll be in touch in some form or fashion. Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Is it hot tonight, or?
Seventy-eight. No, it's just.
Just the rum, or use those places on the cold side?
No, there's nothing.
The camel likes it. You just thought stuff over there?
That's my forehead, yeah.
Now, this is like fifteen minutes, right? We don't need to listen to all the testimony all over. Probably. Anything new, right?
Right.
Please.
But it's a new license.
I.
It's just seasonal.
I know.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So hot.
Is it set for seventy-eight, or is it?
It's just one by itself. Last week was a six.
It's, it's a pond.
It's so like big.
Yeah, it's at our sixty-nine. It's a hot air in the room. Probably a dissonant.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah. They say the issue is knowing.
This wasn't seasonal last time, was it?
No.
Okay, welcome back. Next up, we have an application for a new seasonal all-alcoholic club license, entertainment license for Seaco Shores, Seven Fairview Lane, for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Attorney Stephen McGlaughlin for Seaco Shores Association Incorporated.
Oh, my. The movie Groundhog Day was on last week, and I saw it. The board may have that feeling themselves, like it's just back over and over again. But mindful of the schedule that you have, we'll try to be brief and get in all the information that we have. There has been changes since the last application. We have changed it from an all-year-round license to a seasonal license. We've cut back the hours from a one o'clock closing time to a midnight closing time. We also did add a, an entertainment license so that we could have music at the facility. And we had the Common Vigilance License before, and that is again repeated. I think everyone is familiar with what Seaco Shores is. We're a large neighborhood. We're a large community of nine hundred homes. We've been in existence as an association since nineteen fifty-one. We've had a clubhouse at the, at the site since nineteen fifty-one. And this new clubhouse is at the same location. Over the course of many years, Seaco Shores developed, unfortunately, a very bad reputation. And in the past decade or more, there have been concerted efforts by a very dedicated Board of Directors and members to change that image. And we've been successful, and I think the board recognizes that. Crime rate has gone down dramatically, probably one of the lowest in the town. One of the reasons for that is that Seaco Shores Association pays a private police detail to monitor and cruise the area and to maintain security in the area. Last year was ten thousand dollars for that expense. Seaco Shores Association also maintains the beach at Seaco Shores. We pay for the replenishment of the sand when it's eroded and washed away by the current. Seaco Shores Association maintains forty-one rights of way to the water for all the residents in the neighborhood. Seaco Shores Association maintains the beautification program throughout the area, maintains the grass strip along the road, maintains the front entrance, which has won several awards over the years. Over the course of all these past years, this past decade, the costs continued to go up, and the association was failing. Couldn't maintain the income that we needed to keep on those functions that benefit all nine hundred homes. And so, a plan was devised by several of the board members with an operating committee, very dedicated, very intelligent group of people from a wide range of trades and experience, that the best way to maintain the successes that Seaco Shores has attained over the years, to attract new members, and to keep the members that we have, was to build the bigger carry, so to speak. And you'll hear that phrase again, I think. And that was to build a clubhouse that people would want to be a member of, and to have functions and events for the community that people would want to attend. And we have successfully done that. We have had investors put up over a million dollars to build a brand-new facility. And you've seen it, it's a beautiful clubhouse, beautiful community center. One of the key functions of that facility is to run a full-service kitchen, offering a full menu to service the people and the guests. And one of the key things needed for that license, that, that business to be successful, not a business, but that aspect of the association, is to have a liquor license. Last year, the selectmen saw fit to give us a number of one-day liquor licenses. And we used those, and things went very well while we had them. But when they ran out, we couldn't run that restaurant at a profit. When it operated, it operated at a loss. And obviously, that's not a model that we can continue. So, the, the request that we have tonight is for a reduced liquor license with seasonal as opposed to year-round, lesser hours, and allow this, this facility to function the way it needs to function so that we can, as an association, continue to benefit all of the members, all of the members and all of the residents of the whole peninsula. There are several people that would like to speak tonight, so I will let them do it. One is John McLeod. He's the Director of Butter. He has to leave early, so I'm gonna let him, ask him to speak first, if I may. We also have Dave Smith, who is going to present to the board visually an idea of where the investors to this clubhouse live in Seaco Shores. It's been suggested that it's only a certain area, people on the waterfront. I think you'll be surprised to see who it really is. And then, lastly, Dan Frauley, who was a key person in the development of the, of the clubhouse and the community center, will take you through kind of the rationale and thought process of what led us to where we are tonight. So, John?
Just, just before you do that, I just need to do a little bit of housekeeping. For disclosure purposes, I'm the holder of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license. The other thing is, I'd like to ask the board to make a motion to enter into the record all correspondence from the previous application. Both pro and con?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? The ice avenue. Thank you very much.
Good evening.
My name's John McLeod. I live at Thirteen Fairview Lane, which is, I'm a Director of Butter of the, of the association. I think I'm the only Director of Butter. I think there's some people across streets and stuff. And I'm a year-round resident, also Falmouth. So, I'm just here, here to say that there's, this, everything's been positive with regard to the association. Hasn't been any problems. And it's been, you know, just a real positive experience. A lot of, a lot of these folks you see in the audience have really gotten to know each other. And, you know, it's just a really good thing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One other thing is I forgot to mention, had been touched upon at previous meetings, was we were hiring a professional manager. And we have hired Jeffrey Lawrence, who the board may know as the previous owner of the Rhubarb, own the Rhubarb in Falmouth, own the Rhubarb in Chatham, own the Rhubarb in Hyannis. So, years of experience in the restaurant business, years of experience in the alcohol aspect of the restaurant business as well. And Jeff is tip-certified. Now, he's here tonight.
David Smith on Three Hundred Edge Water Drive, East of Mississauga. And it has been suggested, I think, that, you need me the microphone?
You have to stay there.
That this clubhouse is, is exclusive. It was designed to be for the wealthier folks. Contrary to that, in reality, we structured some plans, some payment plans for folks over as many as ten years so they could be parts of this. And those payments were funded by other folks in the community who essentially lent them money, de facto, by a bond offering that we put together. So, we did everything we possibly could to be as inclusive as possible in this program. I think the suggestion that it's exclusive, most of you probably know Seaco Shores Peninsula, on the southern end of the peninsula, properties sell for quite a bit. We've had properties sell as much as three million dollars. On the northern end of our peninsula, on Seaco Shores Boulevard, you can still buy a property today for under two hundred thousand dollars. Unique in this town, certainly unique in Massachusetts to have a community that's as diverse as that. That's economic diversity. We have cultural diversity as well. We're proud of that. We tried to encourage that. It's part of what we built into the program. What I'm gonna show you is a map. And you can take a look at this, and I'll hand it around to you. This is, this is a map of the peninsula of Seaco Shores. Okay? And this is the southern tip, the northern tip. And it's been suggested by some that this is exclusive. Well, if that were the case, then you would see, the red indicates people who've made the investment in the Seaco Shores clubhouse. They've essentially put up fifty-four hundred dollars of their capital to get this clubhouse built. And if this was an exclusive club, what you would see is the end of this peninsula would be bright red, especially on the waterfront, and the center would be clear. And there'd be nobody participating in the northern end of the peninsula. But you can see very clearly, ladies and gentlemen, is that it's not the case. I would describe this to you as a checkerboard. We have people from all economic means, all ages, all ethnicities, who have made the commitments of buying into this program. So, I wanted to just make the point that this is absolutely positively not an exclusive club. We've done everything we possibly can to make it as inclusive as possible. I'd hand this around to the board to take a look at yourselves. Get some food on the house. Dan?
Good evening. My name's Dan Frauley. I'm a resident of Seaco Shores and have been since I was seven years old. I mentioned that last time. I now, with my wife and I, own a house over on Edge Water Drive West. I know that we've, the board is running late, and we'll, with all respect to the board's time, I have a presentation, I think is really important, to show some facts. And I will be respectful of the board's time. We'll get through this very quickly. My commitment is to do it under ten minutes, okay? But I think it's really important that you see these slides that I'm gonna show you. These are the slides that were shown for six years in a row, with many, many hundreds and thousands of hours of volunteer time, okay? And why this came to fruition, and most importantly, and here's the important point, why this seasonal liquor license that we're requesting is a must-have for us, it's not a nice-to-have, okay, financially. That's my singular point I want to make, and I want to show you why that is, okay? So, I'll run through this really quickly, and if I could have your attention. Thank you, Dave. First question, I'd like to ask the question, what would Falmouth do if two-thirds of its residents believed that paying taxes was optional, and there was no amenable legal recourse from which to enforce taxes? Yet, those two-thirds expected to use all the services, to have police details, et cetera. That's the dilemma that Seaco Shores has. That's not a very widely-known problem. That is the core problem with Seaco Shores. And I'll show you exactly why. We've looked at this, and looked at this, and looked at this. But I would ask you to consider that. This is what happened to us, and why we ended up in this situation. The assets are awesome. Deep-water access, thirty-one ROWs, a great beach, Washburn Island State Park, two acres of western facing waterfront owned by association. The liabilities, unfortunately, as Dave said years ago, highest crime rate in Falmouth, with a lot of, a lot of slumlord-owned rentals, very, that didn't invest in the homes years ago. The density was considered a negative at the time. The brand and the reputation followed with that, was relatively negative. And Seaco Shores Association, although well-intentioned management, it was poorly managed, okay? Here's the result, and this is important. This was the presentation, this was the slide that was shown to the members, okay? This was the core, this was the financial path the association designed. Let me make it really clear what this is. Unfortunately, this is not our dues, our fees. This is our expenses, okay? This was our fees, okay? And again, you see that big flat, that big, negative thirty-four thousand dollars a month? That's where we're headed financially. That's financial ruin. That's financial bankruptcy. That's real, okay? That's real stuff there. That's what we were facing. And it's still stunning to me when, when people don't understand, right? We have taxes to pay because we own thirty-one right-aways. We left all these great assets. We have taxes to pay on that. We have utilities to pay on that. Eleven thousand dollars in insurance, twenty thousand dollars in, last year, to defend one right-of-way with a dispute amongst members, this association had to spend twenty-five thousand dollars. And I, and about four or five other members stepped in free and negotiated that because we couldn't afford to do it. And we spent more and more time we didn't have because of this, right? Eighteen thousand dollars in replacement funds Seaco's was doing, again, I don't believe it was poorly intentioned. But you hear about the nightmare in Florida, say, the fees are really low, but don't put any money aside for replacement. That's what's happening, okay? There was no money allocated to replace the beach, the front entrance, the clubhouse. The police detail, ten thousand dollars for that, land state, et cetera, et cetera. Those are real dollars. Next. So, those are the expenses. The fees were flat, and here's why. Three hundred members were paying for what, nine hundred residents' use? That's the simple fact, okay? Expectation of services, however, by the six hundred is still very high, just like the town, I assure you, if the town believed it was optional, still be calling, looking for police. That's what happens here. If you ask how many, our presidents and past presidents are here, how many calls they get from, for residents asking for help? And if you ask members, what they would tell you would be a low perception of value. That's, that's what members would tell you. Remember, I'm the, I'm the CEO of a market research firm, so I, I do know a fair amount about market research, right? And we use, that's some of those capabilities during this project. Next slide, Dave. Here's the important slide. This was, the fees are flat because the members are flat, three hundred of nine hundred. And there were a hundred theories, if you ask folks in the audience, that dues are too expensive, you priced us out of the market, et cetera, et cetera. None of it's true. It's all delusional. Because for fifty years, and this just captures the last fifteen, for fifty years, the membership of Seaco Shores has been three hundred and fifty plus or minus fifty, not because of the dues. The dues were forty-five dollars in here, okay? Forty-five dollars. They went to a hundred dollars. The only time the number of members moved in Seaco Shores was when the economy either tanked or was doing really well. When it was doing really well, members go out. When it tanked, it tends to slide a little bit. But it's the same core, three hundred members supporting the association, and that's how many people, given a voluntary tax base, would contribute to the town, one-third. That's just human nature, okay? You can, it's still, that's just unfortunately the way, the way that it is. Okay? So, who are these nine hundred? That's the question we've asked ourselves for years. Where are these people? I never see them in the, I never see them in the, they don't participate, they don't volunteer, et cetera, et cetera. There's three hundred people who consistently pay their dues. My dad, who never went to an association event, paid his dues for over forty-five years, never missed, because it was a responsibility, he said he believed, to live on that peninsula. And he knew the real expenses associated that. Last of a great generation, and he, and he was, right? Two hundred and sixty absentee landlords, there's two hundred and sixty-five rental properties on Seaco. We believe two hundred and sixty absentee landlords are happy to take financial returns out of Seaco, but they're not putting, not anything back in. Two hundred and forty apathetic owners who don't pay dues, seventy-five people who can't afford it, and who will not step forward. We have a program. If you volunteer your time, we'll give you due credit, dues credit. We want everybody to be a part of this. Very few people take us up in that. Twenty-five people, and we think this is a very small number. Very few people voted against the clubhouse, and it's the same number of people who complain about everything, won't pay any dues, and are very vocally negative. But it's a very small number. We had three hundred people voting, taking a vote about this clubhouse, and it was over ninety percent that said yes to it. Even people who couldn't afford to invest at the time. This is the result. You have a clubhouse that can't be repaired, a beach that can't be refilled. This is reality. Beach couldn't be refilled. You have a front entrance that can't be maintained, okay? You have insurance and taxes soon to be they couldn't pay. Those are the last holdouts, right? We had to do something. Okay? So, here's the reality of the options, one at a time. And we looked at these, and we debated these over and over and over again. First, sell the assets and close the association. And we seriously considered that. The second one, that would have been World War I, right? World War II would have been mandated, including police officers, mandated membership. We considered that, because there's no reasonable cost or amenable way to do this legally. It could be done, that was World War II, we said no. It leaves you one option. Option three, create a positive incentive, improve the Seaco Shores property, to change the perception of value, and attract members. Just like it's done in the real world, okay? Just like it's done in the real world. You have to create something of value. So, that began this program. And that, what we knew at that time was that, when we made that last day, that, do that Last of a great generation, and he was, right? Two hundred and sixty absentee landlords, there's two hundred and sixty-five rental properties on Seaco's. We believe two hundred and sixty absentee landlords are happy to take financial returns out of the Seaco's, but they're not putting anything back in. Two hundred and forty apathetic owners who don't pay dues, seventy-five people who can't afford it and who will not step forward. We have a program, if you volunteer your time, we'll give you due credit, dues credit. We want everybody to be a part of this. Very few people take us up in that. Twenty-five people, and we think this is a very small number. Very few people voted against the clubhouse, and it's the same number of people who complain about everything, won't pay any dues, and are very vocally negative. But it's a very small number. We had three hundred people voting, taking a vote about this clubhouse, and it was over ninety percent that said yes to it. Even people who couldn't afford to invest at the time. This is the result. You have a clubhouse that can't be repaired, a beach that can't be refilled. This is reality. Beach couldn't be refilled. You have a front entrance that can't be maintained, okay? You have insurance and taxes soon to be they couldn't pay. Those are the last holdouts, right? We had to do something. Okay? So, here's the reality of the options, one at a time. And we looked at these, and we debated these over and over and over again. First, sell the assets and close the association, and we seriously considered that. The second one, that would have been World War I, right? World War II would have been mandated, including police officers, mandated membership. We considered that because there's no reasonable cost, amenable way to do this legally. It could be done, that was World War II, we said no. It leaves you one option. Option three, create a positive incentive, improve the Seaco Shores property, change the perception of value, and attract members, just like it's done in the real world, okay? Just like it's done in the real world. You have to create something of value. So, that began this program, and that, what we knew at that time was that, when we made that last day, that, do that third option, that meant thousands of hours and lots of money, okay? But we were willing to do it. And by "we," I don't just mean me, I mean a lot of people, and there's a lot of people involved in this. This was our vision, back up, sorry, Dave. This is our vision, to be the most desirable community to live on Cape Cod. We crafted a new vision for ourselves. Next slide. And this is, this is the slide used in that presentation, to the young help the old, and the old mentor the young. The healthy help the sick. Everybody is on one team. Diverse neighbors develop relationships and friends. Visitors want to return and become part of it. That, there's nothing exclusive about this. This is nothing, we want to leave anybody out, okay? This was our stated vision, and if anybody had gone, they would have seen this, okay? And we're acting on this. So, our strategy, the hard work, we were using a carrot, not a stick. We were improving the assets to change the perception of value and attract additional members, okay? That's how, that's how we have, we had to do it. Additional members, here's the important point. Once we attract you and you invest it, when those people, not only do they commit a significant amount of capital, they commit to lifelong dues-paying membership. In effect, in effect, countering this age-old thing that we, dues are optional, would in fact, all the expenses are not optional. Taxes were not optional, insurance is not optional. So, these people were willing to commit to lifelong dues, and that's the group and the foundation we would build upon, okay, to turn the whole community around. And that's a big point, okay? This was the whole strategy. And that was the result, six years later, okay? And what you don't see is the picture facing the other way, where there was over three or four hundred people in that room celebrating all that work and all that construction, all that effort by volunteers. We opened the clubhouse last year, it was our clubhouse and community center. Those of you who haven't seen it, it's a beautiful structure, it's very nicely done. A lot of effort, people in this room put time into it, it wasn't just done with arms-length contractors. Next slide, David. You can see that's the water face, that faces the water that way. And you can see that very nice area upstairs. People love to come down and get a western-facing view at Seaco's, but most of the homes aren't for water. They come down and go, wow, this is really cool, right? And here's the, here's the important secret sauce. This is the dining facility. Let's stay on this slide for a second. This is the dining facility, okay? This is the number-one thing. Remember, we did our homework. We did, we surveyed all our members. And the number thing, one thing they wanted was a dock. Town said, no dock. We couldn't build a dock. We knew that. The number-two thing, by a significant margin, was a food and beverage service. The number-one thing requested by members, a food and beverage service. Not food, not beverage, food and beverage service. Anybody in the restaurant business knows this, that if you're not in the fast-food business, you need to do both, or you don't exist, right? This would be one of the, and here's the most important piece. This is the financial engine for the whole thing, okay? This is the financial engine for the whole thing. And you could say, you should have thought of that, and you, again, that's just not, it's just not possible. We've thought about this, we have a lot of talented people, a lot of walks of life here. We've been over and over and over it. This is the financial engine. This is a, that's why this liquor license, seasonal, is a must-have, not a nice-to-have. Next slide. That gives us a strong foundation, and that balances the books, and it's happening, right? And if we don't have that seasonal liquor license, that doesn't work, okay? We're back to where we started. We have a nice building with no one in it and no income, same problem we had before, and a lot of pissed-off people, right? Good, I'm sorry. This is also what's happening as a result of it. This is the benefit. We've won four beautification awards in a row. We're now setting aside money, not only for our clubhouse, but also for our beach, which we now know depreciates every eight years. We have to set aside a certain amount of money for that to be good stewards for the whole peninsula, which everybody uses the beach. The Falmouth Police, which we now spend ten thousand dollars a year that I mentioned, that's why our crime rate's going down. And our right-aways, which last year, one right-away, one little problem, blew up into a neighborhood feud that, you know, I hadn't seen since I saw the Hatfields and McCoys years ago. And it's unfortunate, but those right-aways are really sensitive, and we had to spend, again, thousands of hours, the association were already committed, and hundreds more had to be committed to solve this because we had, had, had the, this time, we had the capital to do it. Fortunately, we had to spend twenty-five thousand dollars, and we took care of that problem, okay? And this is what you've been heard referred to. This was the number-one, look at this. See that one? That's Seaco Shores. I tell you, anybody who's been there more than a few years never thought they'd see that. The number-one up-and-coming place. And look at here, because, especially with the recent construction of an association clubhouse on the peninsula, all the realtors know it, everybody knows it, okay? So, but don't get focused on the clubhouse, get focused on the strategy. And the clubhouse is only a tool. It's all it is. It's a tool. Because it's the financial engine that's making this thing go, okay? And maybe in the future, there'll be other things. But right now, we're in a startup situation. That's why there's so many people here tonight to support this, because we know this. So, please, partner with us on this, partner with us on this. Our yes to our vision, please say yes to our strategy, say yes to our approach, yes to our financial engine, and yes to new jobs, and there are a bunch of them. There's a lot of summer jobs here, and there's some full-time jobs get created with this. And yes to our community. That's what we're asking you to do tonight, is to say yes to our community. We appreciate your service. I served my country as well. I was a Navy fighter pilot for seven years. The only time I've seen people contribute as much time with as little effort as I did when I was a fighter pilot was these people here. That's mine.
Doug, can you get the light? Mr. McLaughlin, are you, are you done with your presentation?
I would just only add, Mr. Murphy, that, as was discussed in the past, this is a private building, it's a private association. We could theoretically do BYOBs, but that's not the way we want to run this. We want to run this as a first-class operation in every sense. We don't want to have a situation where people come in with cool as a beer or bring their own things, and we can't control or monitor it, we don't know who's bringing in what, we don't know who's serving it, we don't know who's drinking it, and we don't know how much they're drinking. We would rather give up that freedom and surrender control to this board and to the state through a liquor license, where we are responsible and we have to answer to somebody. That gives us the kind of control that we want. We want to have a manager in the, in the facility. We want to know who's being served. We want to know how much they're having. We want to know that we aren't having people walk out our door and driving drunk, which has been a concern that's been mentioned in the past. That's not what we want. We want to protect the association, we want to protect the neighborhood, we want to protect the town. So, we are proposing to give up the freedom so that we can have the first-class operation that the association wants, that the community needs. And this will truly benefit the town of Falmouth as well.
Okay. I'll, does the board have any questions to the applicant, or do you want to wait until after we have public comment?
We'll wait until we have-
Okay. So, I'll open it up to public comments, either for or against, if anyone-
You don't have to speak into it as long as you speak. Dear Board of Selectmen, it's a barroom to the hours of it. I'm a mother against drunk driving, to begin with. I don't like the hours that a seasonal all-alcohol club license, eleven AM to one AM, with, with the all-alcohol club license will bring crime back to my area. Year-round residential zone, not commercial. I would rather see it go from eleven to eleven. It's fair if you obey not drinking and driving. There are young families that, that live here, year-round, that we are not irresponsible adults to have alcohol and no designated driver to drive the drunks home and to leave the cars to clubhouse. I have worked hard to not allow crime back in my area. Alcohol brings back crime to Seaco Shores Association. You drink and you drive and you go to jail.
Anybody else have comments? Yes, sir?
I thought it was the air conditioner. Paul O'Connell, at three ninety-nine Seaco Shores, we're new neighbors to the association over the last year, myself, my wife, and my five-year-old son. Nothing but positive experience with the association last year and the facilities going down there. We found the experience very safe, quiet, to be honest. We live two houses just north of the facility, and we found that the police, just to give a shout out to them, in a completely unrelated episode that I had, required them to come to the house very fast, very responsive to the end of the, to our, to our property, and a completely unrelated thing with the association, but just like to add our voice to moving forward with the proposal for the license.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes?
My name is Kathy Chager. I too am new to the Seaco Shores Association, but I'm not, I'm not new to alcohol abuse, and it doesn't matter if you're drinking in a club or in your own house. You are not going to be able to control what anybody does. There's plenty, since we've moved there, we've just built a new house there, I have found it to be a pleasant, up-and-coming area. My husband and I both come from the housing projects in East Boston, so we know an area when it's on its way down, and we're very easily, just basically see something when it's on its way up. I think the clubhouse will bring an added benefit to the whole peninsula. Thank you.
Yes, please.
I have another letter for the board. I have to apologize because I've been out and I haven't been able to review the new application. I was not aware that they've reduced the dates and the hours. What would the seasonal period be? Does anybody know?
Seasonal is typically April first till November the thirtieth, I believe, and you can ask for an extension through January the fifteenth on a seasonal license.
I think that most of my letter will still apply because I still have the same concerns, even with the reduced usage. As a former planning board member, I should announce my name, Winifred Woods of Seaco Shores Boulevard. As a former planning board member and a fifty-eight-year resident of Seaco Shores Boulevard, I again ask the board to deny the application, not for the all-alcohol club license, but for the seasonal. Seaco Shores is a neighborhood of one thousand lots with nine hundred-plus homes on three hundred-acre peninsula, located relatively far away from the core service area of police hospital and government. While entirely zoned residential C, the neighborhood is non-conforming in every respect to modern zoning requirements that are designed to promote safety and health. The development was planned and laid out in the mid-nineteen forties as a modest summer resort. The evolving zoning standards of the past seventy years mostly do not apply to this grandfathered development. Despite all of the dense residential development in recent decades and the resulting increase in service requirements, there is still only one access point to the northerly half of Seaco Shores Boulevard, I'm sorry. There is still only one access point to serve the entire peninsula of approximately one thousand undersized lots. Therefore, the northerly half of Seaco Shores Boulevard suffers from being the funnel for thousands of vehicle trips per day. The resulting traffic noise, exhaust fumes, and litter have steadily diminished the relative value of the homes along the northerly half of the boulevard. The southerly half of the mile-and-a-half-long boulevard receives far less traffic, which diminishes exponentially as one proceeds farther from Route twenty-eight on the dead-end road. If one were to check the Falmouth School's bus schedule, one would see that the northerly half of the boulevard is where many young families with children reside. Our neighborhood has recently had several serious car crashes due to the fact that drivers have missed stops and driven straight on, into the path of oncoming traffic on the boulevard. The combination of heavy traffic, often going in substantial excess of the posted thirty-five mile-an-hour speed limit, and increasing numbers of visitors unfamiliar with the area and the lack of stop signs at the dozens of intersections, has already resulted in increased crashes with serious personal injury and great property damage. Yet, because Seaco Shores is well outside the core service area for the town, law enforcement and emergency medical response tends to be relatively hampered. Under these circumstances, does it make sense to promote a high-traffic commercial use involving the regular service of alcohol in a large overcrowded purely residential area? Is it reasonable to allow the service of alcohol, I had three hundred and sixty-five days a year until one AM every night? I'm very grateful that they've reduced it, but I still have problems with having that much more traffic and, and commercial usage at the peak time when the peninsula is most densely populated. The Seaco Shores Association represents less than one-third of the families who reside in the neighborhood, and a far smaller percentage of the families who live here year-round, and an even smaller percentage of the families who work in the Falmouth area. Since the building of the one-point-two-million-dollar clubhouse, the membership dues have become unaffordable to a majority of the residents. I've heard from a lot of them who were former members and have had to drop it. The new clubhouse is located almost at the end of the nearly straight mile-and-a-half-long boulevard, and there are a hundred and twenty homes between the new facility and Route twenty-eight. The association has already proposed renting out the clubhouse to non-residents and their guests during the off-season. The selectmen has indicated that it would have more control over the association's operations if it grants liquor license. But having served on and observed our permit-granting boards and commissions and seen the troubling difficulty of enforcement, I have to ask, exactly how does the Board of Selectmen propose to enforce the members-and-guest-only rule when there are no restrictions for ratio of guests per member, and it will be easier for the association to rent out the facility for private functions with mostly non-residents if the liquor license is granted by the board? Does this board appreciate that when the police and fire and ambulance resources are tied up in Seaco Shores, they are not available for the rest of the town? Knowing how our public safety agencies are already stretched beyond reasonable limits, why would this board approve an unnecessary use that increases the demoralizing and stressful demands on our overtaxed police, fire, and medical personnel? Historically, the association never requested the full availability of one-day club liquor licenses, i.e. thirty per year, until last year. Prior to the new clubhouse being built, the recreation activities of the association did not depend on the constant service of alcohol in the neighborhood. The increased commercialization of the clubhouse would result in even heavier truck traffic than we endure now. Deliveries of food and liquor would have to be made while more solid ways would have to be trucked away. How will the board's grant of this liquor license provide leadership to the community and support the laudable efforts of civic groups such as the Falmouth Prevention Partnership and Jack's Pact, who are trying to change attitudes about substance use and abuse? How does the constant service of alcohol in a purely residentially-zoned neighborhood as compared with special-function one-day licenses provide a healthy example to the youngsters of that neighborhood? The clubhouse is served by a large Title V system, and the proposed increase in public use of the clubhouse will result in greater nutrient discharge to the Eel Pond, Charles River, Seapit River, and Walkway Bay Inlayment, an area of critical environmental concern. Does it make sense to encourage the dumping of even more nutrients into the waterways of the Walkway Bay ACEC? Is it consistent or logical for the Board of Selectmen to encourage needless harm to this environment by granting the association's application for constant commercial use in this residential neighborhood? And then request funds from the entire town's taxpayers to remediate the problem through the very expensive Falmouth Comprehensive wastewater plan? Why make a bad problem needlessly worse? Why doesn't the board at least achieve some balance of the competing interests by mitigating the resulting harm from what amounts to a commercial use? Mitigation could include requiring the association to put up stop signs at all the intersections with the boulevard, requiring the association to hire more police details, because ten thousand dollars is not a whole lot of time, to hire more police details during periods of heavy use of the clubhouse, limiting the days and hours of the alcohol service in an isolated purely residential zone, and better general police enforcement of existing traffic laws on Seaco's with respect to speed, texting ban, the requirement for properly-insured registered vehicles, the requirement that drivers be licensed, the prohibition of littering, et cetera. If you read the court reports, you know we have these problems, especially on Seaco's. Thank you for your time. I have this letter for all of you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Good evening. Joe Appicella, Edgewater Drive East in Seaco Shores. That was a heck of a presentation that Dan made, and I would just like to emphasize a couple of things along with what he said. I was there from the beginning. It started out in about the year 2000. We had three members on our board. The infrastructure, as he pointed out, was going down the tubes. We had that rotten clubhouse, the grass along the boulevard was growing knee-high, the sign outside, the paint was peeling. We had all these problems. Our dues, the beach was being eroded, our dues were thirty dollars a year.[1763.83] 900 homes, 300 members, 30 bucks a year. We did everything we could to get 600 people to pay $30 a year, and we couldn't get any more members back then. So, there are people, as he pointed out, that just don't give a darn about what happens. They don't care about what they live. But it turned out, we got together a group of people who really cared and really wanted to make Seaco Shores a better place to live. So, we started with our mission statement, which was to enhance the quality of life for everybody on the peninsula. Okay? We did this by, with our $30 a year dues, by getting donations from people. We raised through donations $40,000 to restore the beach, okay, from our members, okay, a beach that everybody uses. We paid somebody to cut the grass along the Boulevard, something that everybody uses. You saw, we won the beautification award for the entrance. That's all maintained by members. It was all paid for by members through donation. So, I'd like to know where all these people were when we were going through all of this, okay? The association is a neighborhood association, okay? And there's nothing more that we would like to have all 900 homes be a part of the association. It would make it a lot easier for the rest of us. We cleaned the right-of-ways. We mentioned $10,000 a year, okay? That wasn't just last year. We spent an average of $10,000 a year on police details. In fact, the chairman of our detail committee is a retired police chief from Newton. We went from being a pretty high-crime-rate area to probably the second-lowest crime-rate area in town, so we've been told by the police department, and we are the most active crime-watch community in the town, okay? Still, 300 out of 900 people, the rest of them don't really care. Okay? So, we've done all these things. Another thing we do, by the way, is we have a scholarship that we all contributed to for a deserving student who's a resident of Seaco Shores and a member of the association for $1,000, okay? So, he pointed that the dues have gone up, and yeah, they're $300 a year now, and that's quite a big increase. But we did that for a reason, and the reason we did it wasn't just because we have a new clubhouse. The reason we did it was because we were having the same people donate money to all these causes, okay? Now, it's in the dues, and nobody has to donate anything. It comes from all the members, and it's obviously much more fair. He made the point about, how would you like to run the town if only a third of the people pay taxes? Well, that's where we were at. So, we raised $1,003,000 to build a new clubhouse, okay? And that was absolutely phenomenal. We still have about 300, 350 members out of the 900 people that are in there, and as I said before, we'd love to have more of them. The reason I bring this up is because everything we did, okay, we did with our mission statement in mind, which was to enhance the quality of life of all the residents of Seaco Shores. I didn't like living in a town where, when you told somebody who lived in Seaco Shores, they looked at you like you were dirty or something, okay? And the only way that we could change that was to do something to bring everything up, okay? And that's what the association is about, enhancing the quality of life of everybody, whether they're members or not. If you're a resident, we've done something for you, okay? There's no downside to us getting that liquor license. The traffic, somebody mentioned traffic and accidents. We pay for police details. We've had signs up there with the paid details showing people's speeds, okay? We're supporting this thing, okay? There's no downside. It's only an upside for Seaco Shores, and what's good for Seaco Shores is good for the town of Falmouth. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Hello, my name is Julia O'Connell. My husband, Paul O'Connell, spoke just a moment ago. One thing I want to point out is that when we were looking at the house 399 Seaco Shores last, I think it was in February time, what, I would say, what was the real clincher for us, not only was the setting beautiful, but also once we realized that the clubhouse was going to come into existence. And we've been there from the very beginning, in terms of when the restaurant opened. And what's been fun for us is, we're literally, there's only one house in between us and the clubhouse. We have a porch that looks out onto the main, the Boulevard. And what we've noticed is that there are people walking up and down from their own house to the restaurant. And it's been a wonderful experience in terms of getting to know the neighbors. And without that restaurant, we wouldn't have that experience. And also, in terms of safety, by seeing your neighbors and recognizing them, it basically makes you feel more safe. And if you're not having people walking back and forth between their house and the clubhouse, you're not going to get that exposure. And the last thing I just want to bring up is, I actually do some research looking at this concept called social capital, which is all about community connectedness. And basically, what this clubhouse represents is the hub. And without this hub, you're not going to get this connection between all the neighbors. So, that's why it's incredibly important to make sure that this clubhouse can be, can keep going. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Gordon Smith, and I live at 8 Ormond Drive on Seaco Shores. And my wife and I have been full-time residents there since, for about 10 years, nine years, I guess. And we're not wealthy, okay? We both work greater than 40 hours a week to make our ends meet, but we feel the investment in the association and the clubhouse have been worth it to better our community, and we hope that you vote positive for this license tonight. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I can't see you. I saw your hand, but...
Hi, I'm Tricia Smith. I live at 390 Edgewater Drive East. And I just wanted to mention the kids programs that we have in the association, because I haven't heard anyone mention that yet. We have Kids Bingo, and the entire neighborhood is invited to attend. We have Kids Movie Night, and it's all practically free, a dollar. We also have sponsored Estuary Explorers. It's a children's camp for, to learn about the estuary, and we've invited all of the children in the neighborhood to attend, not just members. So, I just wanted to make sure you're aware.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Good evening. My name is Dick Seddy, and I live on Edgewater Drive East. Last year, I was one of the clubhouse managers, and Arlene Schubert was the other. We were kind of co-managers. And I remember coming down and applying for the event liquor licenses. And we did successfully get the 30 licenses. And I went home, and I said, oh, my God, how am I going to ensure the safety? How am I going to ensure that there are no issues? And Arlene and I talked it over, and we did it because we didn't talk to 300 members, but when we say members, we talked to 300 families. And we called upon all the families in Seaco Shores to assist us, and for those 30 events, we did not have one issue. We maintained the safety for everybody on the peninsula by calling upon the families. And this year, Jeff, our new clubhouse manager, is going to do the same thing. He's going to have the same resource, those 300 families. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
And I would just like to add that those hours that were put in by Dick and myself last year were volunteer hours. We were not paid employees, working an average of 50, sometimes 60, hours a week. And this year, we have hired a local person to come in and run the facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? All right. With that being said, I'll close the public comment period and...
Can I make one comment, please? It's one to correct the statement that Ms. Woods made. She indicated that this was open for public rental. That is absolutely incorrect. It's a private entity. It is not open for public rental. That's not the case at all. On our website, we make that very clear.
And that is necessary to say that this is a club license, and Falmouth Liquor Control Offices have the right to inspect any time to make sure that it is, in fact, being used for members and their guests, okay? So, I'm going to close the public comment period and open it up to the board's discussion. Yes.
A few points I'd like to make. First of all, I'd like to appreciate the application. It changed from what it was before, and I made that request, and you try to make some amendments to that. I appreciate that. I'm also, from the parking or the driving point of view on Seaco Shores, I would see that this could be a way to reduce cars trying to go all the way down the Boulevard to get to an establishment for food and drink, and maybe have them, instead of heading off to Route 28, head to your place instead, or walk. And so, certainly, that was my understanding of the clubhouse, was to get people to stay on Seaco Shores and use that as opposed to driving the whole way down to Seaco Shores.
I tend to agree with you. That was an issue that was brought up, versus leaving the peninsula where there is a bottleneck coming onto 28, the folks would be staying on their own peninsula in that situation. Anybody else? Any other comments? Brett?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Well, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate the information. I, honestly, I'm a little disturbed by it, though, however, because the dog and pony show, while it's good, it doesn't address some of the issues that were raised previously, some of the questions that were raised about traffic and so on. And honestly, I guess I'm inclined to approve this this time around, because I appreciate the fact that you've reduced your hours. I appreciate the fact that you're going for a seasonal license now as opposed to a year-round license. But I'm a little disturbed that we're being asked, I can't think of another association in town which has ever come to the Board of Selectmen and shown us a graph where their expenses are exceeding their income, and basically telling us that if we don't give them a license, they're going to go broke. I think it was a really bad way to come across, to be honest with you, and I wouldn't suggest doing it again. The reality here is, you're asking for a liquor license. There are certain responsibilities that come with that, and they're responsibilities that this board has to the town. One of the responsibilities is not to ensure the solvency of a neighborhood organization, and I was a little offended by that, to be honest with you.
Well, certainly, we...
Please, I'm not done. So, I do have some questions, though, that I would like to have answered. There were 30 events last year. Obviously, with the clubhouse being open for these events, there is going to be a certain amount of delivery truck traffic. Do you have numbers for that?
I don't personally, Dick, do you know if we have numbers for that?
I can speak to that.
Last year...
We have to come to the microphone. I'm sorry, sir, for the folks at home, we're going to have to come up.
Yes, I can speak to that. There was deliveries on Wednesdays, and generally, it might have been one and possibly two trucks, and they were in and out in about 15 minutes.
Now, that's for, how many events in a week was that one or two trucks that you're talking of?
Well, one was from one of the food purveyors, and the other one was if there was, like, other supplies and stuff like that that needed to be dropped off, or if we were getting a new piece of equipment.
So...
Because they were open on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So, we got one delivery to load up for the four days that we were going to be open.
Okay. So, would you anticipate that there are going to be more or the same number of trucks? Are you going to be, well, I guess, more to the point of the question is, you're open last year, you said Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, in any given week. Are you going to be open seven days a week this year? And if so...
I think we're projecting Monday through Sunday, and I'm assuming that they will probably be one to two deliveries, and we already discussed that as a board, to make sure that when there are deliveries, that they're either grouped together, or we use the same vendor with multiple things, where it comes food or liquor or whatever into one, so that we're not creating a larger hassle for anyone.
Is that even possible, though? Because the liquor vendors are separate from the food vendors, are they not?
They are, but maybe I could help answer that. Typically, a beer distributor will only deliver once in the town of Falmouth during a week. So, you have to have enough product for a week to carry you. So, you have one delivery day in that week. So, I can answer that question. So, typically, if they had one liquor distributor, one beer distributor, those would be two additional trucks. Typically, is the snack bar or food open all the time?
Well, we're waiting for our pool permit, which I guess we just got today, and they're going to do a lunch service and a dinner service for that. So, we would like to maybe say, you know, Jeff will probably be able to speak to that as far as being the new manager, if we'd have to have a larger delivery. And some of the stuff that's not perishable, we can, of course, buy for three, four weeks in advance. So, it might be just local, like, local fresh vegetables and stuff like that.
Right. I guess the point that I was trying to answer for you is, the only increase here would be the beer and liquor distributor, because they're currently doing a food service there as it is, which they don't need the permit from us, I believe. We're done with public comments, unless you want to answer his question in some form or fashion.
I have another question regarding the individual automobiles. Obviously, there's a lot of foot traffic, as I understand it. But you have, in the prior hearing, you did come before us and say that you wanted to open it up to, not public events, but obviously, events that members might want to host. Again, there's a limited number of parking spaces there. The special permit that you have right now is going to expire later this year. How are you going to manage, the clubhouse has a capacity of, what, 120?
120.
And there are only 30 spaces, 30-something spaces?
In the event that somebody was proposing to have a function such as a wedding or anniversary party, a birthday party, something of that nature, the manager, Jeff Lawrence, will know how many people are expected. If the number of people that would require transportation to the facility would be greater than what we can provide in parking, then one of the requirements would be, they have to provide parking off-site and then shuttle people in. It's a common thing that's done with weddings and other locations and things of that nature. So, we will not have a situation where cars will be parked on the street or creating any of that. We were very mindful of that restriction, so that's how we would address it.
What off-site location would you propose?
Well, I have no idea what the off-site location would be. If it was a wedding, perhaps they could stay parked at a church and then be shuttled from there. If it was someplace else, they'd have to arrange that themselves.
Okay. I guess one of my concerns is that, obviously, at the head of Seaco Shores, a short walk away, there's a town parking lot...
For the boat landing.
For the boatyard.
That's...
Not the boatyard, excuse me, for the boat landing.
Correct.
And what I don't want to see is some competition in the summer where cars end up filling that up because somebody has an event and they've decided to use that.
I agree 100%. During busy weekends, that lot is full with boats and trucks and trailers, and I believe there's already signs there indicating there's parking for vehicles with trailers only. Pretty sure that's there.
It is, but I'm wondering if we couldn't perhaps attach some condition, actually requesting that off-site parking be designated, if, in fact, it's necessary, so that the town knows where the parking is going to be, so that it's clearly delineated in the condition.
Can I ask a question? It might be helpful. Do you plan on, I know many other clubs in the community, i.e. Falmouth Yard Club, does not do any functions unless it's strictly for their members in the summer season, because basically, you're going to close your facility to your members. My question to you is, will that, in fact, be the case here, or are you planning on providing opportunities for private functions meeting from a member and their guests?
As far as I know, there's no plans to have conflicts between private functions, precluding members from coming in using it. Dick Seddy...
Yeah, we have that, excuse me, Dick Seddy again. We have that posted on our website, private functions after Labor Day, okay? And they can run until just before Memorial Day. I also have a second answer for Mr. Putnam. We are developing a parking plan for the ZBA, because we were before the ZBA, and they require that we come back with a parking plan. So, in a month, we'll have it, and we'll start showing it to the abudders and our members. And this is going to add additional parking space on the island. But we've got to make sure that we're good neighbors to the people who abut, that even though we own that island all the way down between Five U and Seaco Shores, we absolutely want to make sure that we are good neighbors. So, we're going to be sharing it with the abudders, with our members, and then we'll bring it to the ZBA. And we have to do that before October 31st.
And the only other thing is, for the board, I would like the board to consider the idea of imposing conditions, for example, as was men... the idea of imposing conditions, for example, as was mentioned, stop signs along the cross streets. I think clearly traffic is an issue down there and we can impose conditions on the license. And I think it certainly should be considered.
I don't know whether you can do that. Folks, we're having a discussion up here. If you can please keep it down. We'll have our discussion, but it's important that we can talk. I don't know whether we can impose that. That's mitigation outside of their own area. That's on public roads, or private roads. They're asking for stop signs, I believe, at the intersections of all those streets going up Seacoast Shores.
But this is the Neighborhood Association and the Association has talked of doing improvements, of doing beach mitigation, beach nourishment, the maintenance of the right-of-ways. It seems to me that this is in keeping with what the Association might do anyway. And if we're going to grant them the license, it seems to me that we can ask for some conditions to address some of the concerns that have been raised about traffic. I mean, honestly, one of the things that I'm not asking for, because I know it's a huge ticket item, but somebody actually approached me and said they'd like to see a stoplight at the end of Seacoast Shores. And I mean, I used to live down there. I know what kind of a pain it can be getting in and out of there. But I also know that a stoplight there is, that's quite an expense, especially with the red tape involved with the fact that it's a state highway.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure we can make it a condition, but we could suggest that they maybe talk with the Traffic Advisory Committee, because they're the ones who usually make the recommendations to the chiefs regarding any types of stop signs. So I don't know that you could actually make it a condition, but a strong suggestion that they do that. And I'm sure there might be some neighbors in there that might like the idea of having. I've driven down there more so recently and noticed that you have to, when you're driving, you really have to drive at a more moderate speed because you know that people are coming out from the side streets. But, you know, I think they live there all the time. The other thing I wanted to mention was that you also have a condition on your applications for events that any event where the numbers of people would exceed fifty would require a police detail. Is that still part of your regulation? So that would help a great deal, I think, with some of the issues you raised about parking and whether or not that would be handled properly because it would require a police detail. I think the other thing I want to say is, many years ago, when I was on the board and Joe Appicella was the president of the Association, he invited me down to take a look at the beach and some of the issues regarding the beach, which I know relates to the sand, you know, the nourishment and the capacity of the beach to even be a beach, you know, because there are so many of you who live there. So I spent a fair amount of time off and on down there with Joe, making sure that, and then the parking, that you had a big issue of parking at the beach. People were parking in front of other people's homes and all that sort of thing. And I really want to commend you for the tremendous work you have done to bring your own neighborhood and the Seacoast Shores community together, to really find ways, as you say, the social connectedness that you mentioned, the idea that it is a neighborhood and people who live there want to be part of a neighborhood. And I think that the seeds that you've planted to make it happen, although I know it's probably been, from how you describe it, it hasn't been easy. I think in the end, you're going to end up with a community that people are going to really want to live in. And I know that not everybody necessarily likes that or that's not perhaps what they enjoy most in life. But from the people who have spoken tonight, it appears that they really buy into your idea of community connectedness and having a clubhouse like that where people can come, not only to bring their families, but to bring their guests, I think is a very positive thing.
At the very least, I think you've done a wonderful commercial for Seacoast Shore.
Really?
Just to follow on, would you happen to know, I know a number of the cross streets on Seacoast Shores are private roads. And this is why I'm asking about making this a condition, because being private roads, the town is unlikely to put stop signs there unless they become part of the public inventory. Would you happen to know how many are private and how many are still?
I do not know. I think the town would probably know that better than even we would. We checked with the Town Clerk's Office or a traffic control group that you have. In previous dealings with other towns, the traffic controls are strictly guarded. There are state statutes that govern this. For us to put up traffic signs is a huge issue. I think it's a huge no-no without lawful approval. So, I mean, it is...
Well, obviously, if we make it a condition, then you're getting a certain degree of approval and it would be expected that you'd go through the normal channels.
Understood. My concern, Mr. Putnam, would be, I wouldn't want to see a condition imposed that we then can't comply with because somebody else won't let us. So we will take that and run with it as far as we can to ask what can be done. But I don't know the answer to it specifically.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I was going to say, I'm not sure we even have the authority to do that. But I mean, you might want to, if you want to pursue that, is to put it in there, subject to whether or not the Selectmen, a determination is made whether or not we even have the authority to impose that type of a condition, because I'm not sure we do.
We'd be very happy to research it and report back and just what we can find out. That would be, I think maybe that's the first step, is to find out what we can do and what we can't do and let you know.
Well, and I just need to say, we have no idea how many of those stop signs are represented, what the costs are. We could be imposing a condition on here that would be cost prohibitive, number one. Number two, I really don't think that that is something that I have ever seen mitigation for a license off-premise. I mean, we have control of the property where the license is being issued. I could be wrong, have been wrong in the past, but I've got to say that this goes beyond the bounds of the licensed property, you know? And I do know that it does have to get the approval of the Traffic Advisory Committee, which ultimately reports back to the town manager, who ultimately then approves what the Traffic Advisory Committee has to say. But to make any kind of condition, and we don't have any knowledge of what that would cost, would be... I just don't think it would be fair to anybody because we would just be sitting here waiting to see what it would cost. And I just, I've never seen it before, but...
I only suggest it again because we're talking about, this is not a standalone club like the Elks or something, that we're talking about a Neighborhood Association. We're talking about neighbors who have raised, I think, legitimate concerns about traffic. And as far as knowing the cost, quite honestly, we've imposed costs. We recently imposed lighting conditions on a liquor license in West Falmouth. And I don't think any one of us has any idea what it would cost for an electrician to put up the appropriate lighting there, so...
But that was on the premises. This is not on, keep in mind, on a private road. The people who, if it's a private road, the people who own both sides of that road own to the middle of the street. It's not the Association. It's not even their property. So we can't impose something on them that's not their property. I'm just, I don't know how you would enforce it. We're going onto someone's private property to do that, if they're a private road. But I agree that, I agree if the folks there would consider pursuing it in some area or some fashion and work with the neighbors, it would be a great thing. Maybe the town could even work with you.
We can initiate the inquiry.
They're a hundred and fifty dollars apiece on a poll. I had asked Ray Jack.
Oh, you did? Okay.
I would move approval of the application to the new seasonal alcohol license, entertainment license to Seacoast Shores Association.
You want to put the hours in there from...
I think that's part of their application.
Yes, to midnight.
Until midnight, not amendment, that's what the application states.
Okay. Well, I'll shoot you in a second.
Can we have something in the conditions regarding parking, that off-site parking be, at the very least, that it be identified that the parking lot at the end of Seacoast Shores, and I understand that it's posted and says no parking without trailers, but I've seen parking without trailers there. It doesn't necessarily stop folks from doing it. And what I don't want is to get into a law enforcement issue where they're having to take it or tow cars because it's interfering with the boat traffic.
And for any required off-site parking not be town lots?
Well, why don't we specify, put that in the motion, but I don't think there'd be a restriction on the license itself. In other words, it would be...
No, I was going to say, it's not part of the license.
But it wouldn't be part of the license thing, but you're naming that specific lot, though, right?
That's my biggest concern. That's the...
So what is the name of all lots of Duncan?
It's the White's Landing.
Okay, White's Landing Lot.
The lot in White's Landing.
Okay. So there's a motion in a second. Any further discussion from the board? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close?
Me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Folks, we have more business to conduct. If you'll exit the room rather quietly so we can keep going. Welcome home. Good to see you.
She's not going to probably...
How's everything?
Oh, hey.
When did you get the, oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yes, thank you. Next up is approved application for a new all-alcoholic Comin' Vichy license, Chef Roland Catering, 125 Falmouth Woods Road, East Falmouth, for the applicant. Just for disclosure purposes, I'm the holder of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did somebody forget that? Oh, just, okay. My name's Paul Glenn, representing the applicants tonight, Roland and Pat Lammerend. And their capacity is Chef Roland's Catering, Inc. And now we're up at Ballymead. That's where we are with this. This is an application for a new license at the Clubhouse in Ballymead. And I'll just give you a little background. The property is owned by New Falmouth Woods. It gives a lease to MV Golf to manage the whole place. And now we have a sublease to Chef Roland and they want to run the food service. And they'd like to explain to you how they're experienced and how they're capable of doing this. And that would also be the liquor at the place. So Chef Roland's Catering, I think they're very well-known. They're one of the oldest food service places in the town. And Roland's been in the business for twenty-eight years doing this. He's been all around food and all around liquor during that whole period of time. They'll be hiring about twenty new people to do this. And they'll work with the current Roland's Catering with the crew from there. And does anybody have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. Is this the same licensed area that this board has licensed in the past?
This is the exact, we submitted plans, we submitted actually the exact same plans that were used when the license was first granted up there. But this is an application for a new license. It's not a transfer of the old license. These are the best plans we could find. And it seems they had some trouble when the place first opened and the architect didn't provide the final plans. So we would have liked to have get you more detailed architectural plans, but that's the best we could do. But it gives the layout and the application explains what rooms it'll be in.
So if I'm not mistaken, we would be licensing the first floor, the second floor, the area at the turn. And I believe in the past, they had a cart service. Are you asking for that application this evening as well?
A cart out into the course?
Yes, that was done in tournaments.
No, no, we're not asking for that. Now, perhaps one of the people that have their own tournament might come for their own tournament type of license. But that would not be, well, we're not asking, we're not asking for that there. The current manager, this could change, this could change in the future where they could come up with a management plan that would, and would come back and ask to have the whole golf course license. But the current general manager doesn't like that idea. So the lease is only for the clubhouse and the parking in the surrounding area. And the license is just for the clubhouse.
And the little outside shack turned, what, the turn, right? Am I mistaken?
There's...
I thought I saw that in the application, that you have a little outside serving area, hot dog area?
Well, it's...
Yes, right by the pool, right.
So that would be by the health club, we're calling that. Yeah, that's one of the places that would have it too.
Okay, great, okay.
And so Chef Roland would like to tell you, you know, he takes this very seriously. He'd like to tell you how we, it won't take long, I know you've had it, but he could tell you how he's planning on managing the place. There will all be tips, tip certified, all the...
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Basically, the concept that we're looking to establish there is, you know, not fine dining, but more upscale pub-style dining, more of a tapas-style restaurant. To be enhanced with, you know, nice wines by the glass. We're not looking for, you know, a nightclub situation. We're looking more just to enhance the food that we're going to be serving. You know, the place is in dire need of some good food and just good management of that side of it. And I believe with my experience in the field and time served in the field that I am more than capable of carrying this out.
I don't think there's anyone in Falmouth who hasn't had one of your meals in some form or fashion over the last twenty-plus years.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. I was trying to make you younger, what can I say? Anyone have any questions?
No.
No? Do I have, yes?
Just a note in here, we have an email from the Fire Department indicating that there's fire alarm and sprinkler inspections that need to be done.
They have been completed. They are in the process of going forward with that.
All right, so any motion would be subject to the building occupancy permit as well as the board health permit?
Move approval of the application for new all-alcoholic Comin' Vichy license, Chef Roland's Catering, 125 Falmouth Woods Road.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Do I have any public comment on this application? No further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up is vote to discuss, discuss and vote, Oddfellow Hall Adaptive Reuse of Falmouth Housing Trust, Annie.
Good evening. I'm Annie Connolly Caganic. I'm the executive director for the Falmouth Housing Trust. As you said, we're here tonight to discuss the adaptive reuse project at the Oddfellows Hall. I can go through the dates of the project, but I think in the interest of time and the hour, I will skip that unless anyone has a question. Essentially, we are under agreement with the town of Falmouth to create four units of community housing in the Oddfellows Hall building over here in the parking lot. Tonight, the conversation is regarding the materials that you would like us to use for the exterior renovation. We've done an extensive due diligence period and I, you know, can go through what we found. We found asbestos. We found lead paint, no surprise. We found that the structure is sound, which is a pleasant surprise, given how old it is. What we were surprised by and slightly dismayed, and really why we're here, is that the roof is in failure. As you all know, it's a slate roof. It's probably the original roof from eighteen fifty-six. So once we found that out, we started shopping around for prices. So once we found that out, we started shopping around for prices. Simultaneously, we also started to investigate the suitability for solar. And the property is suitable for solar. Has to, it's a fairly complicated mathematical equation. I do have my friend from Falmouth Energy here.
Hi.
And he can answer any technical questions you have. However, not the side that we see here from Town Hall, but the other side that abuts Glenwood, or, you know, faces Glenwood Ave. That is suitable for solar. And that's exciting, because that allows us to significantly reduce our operating budget and increase the debt service that we can carry on the project. So because it's an old building, and because we have to completely abate the hazardous materials, bring the building up to full code compliance, have all new mechanical systems installed, insulate it, this is really the time to do the roof, do it right. And also, we'd love to get, have your approval to use alternative materials in the exterior of the property. So that would look like asphalt, architectural asphalt shingles, like we see in the historic districts. I actually have a picture somewhere here. Maybe one of my helpers could show the board. Thank you. This is a house in West Falmouth that I know about. So this is a picture of what the shingles we hope to use would look like. Very attractive, very nice. The other thing we'd like to have permission to do is to utilize alternative materials when we're talking about the windows. It's real important that while we're gutting the building, we're allowed to not just bring it up to code, but also really well-insulate it. So we'd like to use the new energy-efficient windows, but we will do 12 over 12 external grills, as is in keeping with what is there now. However, we'd like to be able to use aluminum-clad windows with a wood, faux wood finish grain. So it would look like, to most of us, that they're wood, only we would know that they're not. And that is going to, again, significantly reduce our operating and maintenance budget going forward. Additionally, we'd like to discuss the siding. Right now, we have a lovely vinyl siding on three sides. We do need to do external fire suppression in the rear, because it's so close to the Falmouth Human Services Building. It's been recommended to us by our project team, Fred Gampietro, who's here, and also Christian Valley, also here of the Valley Group, to utilize fiber cement siding, which is new-fangled faux cladboard, if you will, not vinyl siding. It actually is pretty expensive, and it looks pretty nice, because I was shopping it at Wood Lumber this weekend. But it's very attractive, but it also has a fire rating. So it's the alternative materials like that that really are going to make or break this project for us, because the margins are tight. As you know, you have budgets there in front of you. And then last, but not least, would be the doors. We need new doors. The first-floor units will be visitable, which means that there'll be 36-inch-wide doorways, interior and exterior, to accommodate a wheelchair. And the other criteria for visitability is zero-step clearance, so a ramp, a modest ramp to get up to the entrance, and then an interior bathroom that a wheelchair could negotiate the turning radius. I sent you a lot of information in preparation of this, and I'm sorry if it was too much. I'm happy to go through the prices of the roofs, if you'd like. We did solicit two estimates from local. Actually, J.K. Scanlon was very helpful and referred us to vendors who had worked on historic municipal properties. Real quick, Greenwood Industries. To re-roof that Oddfellows roof with real slate is estimated to be $98,000. That also would include a $10,000 engineering or shoring up of the beams in the attic, because they are also in failure. To use faux slate, also from Greenwood, would be $97,000. The deal with that substance is that we wouldn't need to re-engineer and shore up the roof, because the faux slate is light. It's basically plastic. And then to re-roof with asphalt shingles, their price is $64,000. I'd like to work on getting it a little lower from a local person, but we don't need to talk about that now. The other quote was from Merrick Engineering. Cost for natural slate from Merrick was $80,000. But again, he had a caveat in the bottom, a $14,000 upgrade for plywood and submaterials, which you'd have to have. So the real number there is $94,000. Synthetic slate, the real number is $93,000. And then the architectural shingles, like I passed the photo around, would be 62. So they're all fairly close together. They're, we of course, almost always exclusively, unless we cannot, we use Falmouth contractors and businesses, and these are off-kate people. So it was nice that they came down here to look at it, but they probably won't get the job. The other thing about the solar is that it will allow us to use mini splits. So I don't know if you're familiar with that, but basically, they're sort of new-fangled technology, not really probably that new-fangled, but small units that heat and cool in the units. They're electrical. So if we have the solar, that significantly cuts our operating cost. We will heat and cool with those units in the four, I mean, in the mini splits, in the four apartment units. And we won't have unattractive AC units hanging out the windows in the summer and things like that. So I think it's going to look better, and it's certainly going to provide a much more comfortable atmosphere for tenants. We do accept, we do expect that we will have, we will generate excess energy, in which case, we will redirect that to the Flynn House, which is our property on Palmer Ave for the chronically homeless. That's it. If we just quickly look at the budget, I think the thing that's really important to see is that our numbers work quite well. It is a tight margin. And our debt coverage ratio is 1.36, which is well within the recommended percentage. Do you have any questions for me?
I'm going to open it up to the board. Any questions in regard to this? Go ahead, Brett.
I guess the, my only question, and I know this is one of those debates that's gone on before, when we've talked about historic buildings, and I know, I distinctly remember the town meeting vote to purchase this building. And the concern, obviously, was the historic exterior, if you will. Personally, I don't have a problem with making it look historic. I'm not one of those purists who think, you know, a building that's 100 years old has to be built as though it was 100 years ago.
Good.
So the question is, is with the shingles and the siding and the windows and everything, can you make it look like it's 100 years old without having to use all of the expensive materials that are usually associated with --
Original. Yeah. I have my project manager here, Christian Valley. Would you like to comment, or should I just wing it?
No, I can say.
Okay. He's very skilled. This is his.
Good evening. My name's Christian Valley. I'm with the Valley Group. Yeah, there's lots of ways, lots of materials that you can use to replicate basically what the historic vernacular was. And we've done that on a lot of projects. One of them being, most recently, the radio station in Woodsville. I think that's a pretty good example of it. But there's certainly ways to do it without really having to use period-correct materials, which can get very costly. So, and that's working with Fred's team on, is that's going to be an important piece of it, because it is such an important location. But yes, there are lots of ways to do that.
I think one of the side benefits, if there is one that can come out of this, aside from obviously the affordable housing, is that if you folks can show what can be done using modern materials to replicate the old-fashioned look, if you will, then it might hopefully help some other folks in town with similar, who are in similar situations, so.
And I think we'll see a lot more of that as we age, because I, there's only so much land in town. And particularly, adaptive reuse projects like this one, and regenerating sort of distressed properties is important and should be a priority for all of us who are working in municipal government.
And I want to make a couple of comments, and I wholeheartedly agree with you, Brett. It's the look that we're coming for in a historic district. It's supposed to be 150 feet, and it's supposed to look. However, in the past, odd groups in this community have implied and used their will to say it's supposed to be the same materials. And nowadays, they're not energy-efficient. Single-pane glass is just really not energy-efficient. So I think this could be a good example as well, of making the building look the same way. But it could be, in fact, a more modern and more of a tight building that could be energy-efficient as well. So I don't have a problem with it personally as well. Doug?
I think a lot of the things that you presented, I'm very supportive of. I just had one question, I guess was about the PV, that you stated that it was expected to make more than the electrical costs of this? And that, I guess, could we get a confirmation of that? Because certainly, the reading I did in the report --
Oh, so I, yeah, let me mention that, that there are some trees over there, and they're actually seedling maples that have grown up between the properties owned by the Clark Trust, and also Bob Ahmet and his partner, Thomas Rackley. And they are sort of that, it's really a weed, and I have a lot of it in my yard, too. They're those invasive maples. And so we have spoken with both Mr. Ahmet and his partner, and Mrs. Clark, to get permission to take those down, which will increase the PV rating that you're referring to. In fact, one big tree that came up on the shading analysis came down in Sandy. So that's good. We don't have to worry about that. And we'll probably, what we'll do is we'll work with them to put up some evergreen, short-growing, you know, narrow trees to provide some privacy. But also, they're not going to get big, so they're not going to be a shading problem, because the building is so tall. But Tim Shore is here, and he can talk about technical solar.
It's just a very quick question. I'm not sure even how relevant it is, because I think it's great that it's going to be on there. But certainly, the data here says it looks like about $900 worth of electricity per year, which I wouldn't think would give you lots of surplus to go anywhere else.
No, we've, Tim Shore from Falmouth Energy. We scaled this project just to distribute to the four units in the building.
Right, okay.
We can, we can scale the system larger by adding another row of panels. There could be some surplus energy generated then.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the board, Pat?
Annie, in your second to the last paragraph, which follows the paragraph that talks about the roofing estimates in the project budget and the pro forma, that, and you have this in italics, that we carefully consider this issue.
Yes.
I'm assuming you mean the alternatives.
The alternatives, yeah.
The roof and all of that. And that if you were to, if that were to be the case, then your financial picture would look a lot better.
Our financial picture will look great.
Will look great.
It will be able to, well, so first of all, the solar will allow us, as I mentioned earlier, to carry more debt service, so we'll have to fundraise less and ask for less CPC, or Affordable Housing Trust Fund subsidies. Also, really, when you're talking about original materials, the initial cost to put alternative modern materials and original materials is sort of similar. When you're talking about the maintenance, that's where you get into a jam. And that's where the cost analysis becomes, in my mind, a no-brainer, particularly for community housing, which we know we need. We've seen that outflow, 20% loss in the past, you know, 10 years since its track. These are the figures you all always ask me, so I brought my poster today. But it's really this group that needs help, that is not staying, that cannot find housing. They won't qualify for the lots of low-income housing that we do have in town, and really can't find year-round apartment rentals. So that's what this is going to be. They're going to be small, micro units. Really, the unit composition itself is going to target a younger demographic, just because it's going to be a little city-ish, if you will, not your traditional apartment. But the location, on the sewer, we are able to carve out some parking spaces on the lot, which is a pleasant surprise to everyone, particularly to those of us who try to park in the summer. So it's really, I feel like it's a strong project. I've certainly been at it for over a year at this point. Our due diligence has been extensive. We've been very lucky to partner with, we have a lot of pals and supporters in the audience tonight, but particularly Fred Gampietro and his group, and Christian Valley and the Valley Group have donated their time, and has Falmouth Energy, donated their time to really look at everything with us. So I think it's, I think it's a go. I hope it's a go.
I just want to make one other comment. This building has sat there idle for many years. And if we continue to do nothing with this building, it will eventually go into such disrepair that we won't be able to make it look anything like it used to look. We put out the RFP, we had one responded, which was your group, which we're very happy that you came forward. So I think it behooves the board to try to make this a success, so that's my thoughts. Yes?
I just have one final comment.
Sure.
Micro units are not all that, what do I want to say? Unpopular. I mean, they're building them in Boston now.
No, they're very popular.
With some of this new development, and micro units are becoming more of the thing. So it isn't like it would be a strange accommodation to have you in Falmouth.
No, and especially --
And it's actually targeted to a specific group.
It's targeted to a younger demographic, and certainly, we have a steady stream of those folks coming through the federal presence that we have in town, through USGS, NOAA, the Coast Guard. But also, you know, we have two world-renowned scientific organizations, and they have a steady stream of young folks who are either post-docs, or, you know, in some sort of program or research study. So I think it makes sense, the micro units that you refer to, I have a neat article on our webpage, I hope. It's definitely on our Facebook page. One of our runners, Jessica Ryan, works for an agency that's building and producing them and leasing them in Boston. And she's also Addie's daughter. So we're a little proud of her. So yes, you're right.
Okay. Does anyone in the board want to consider a motion?
I would move to support the Oddfellows Hall Adaptive Reuse. The board supports the plan to go ahead with the energy-efficient, but not 100-year-old pieces of wood.[1636.44][1636.44](LAUGHING)
Do we want to, do we want to list them?
Yes, I would like that, yeah.
The roofing, the windows, and the solar?
And the roofs.
That's what I said, the roof.
Okay.
The siding, the windows, and the solar.
And the doors.
And the doors.
And the doors. So do you want to make that part of it?
Yep.
Okay.
Is that it? Second.
Motion and a second. Do we have any public comment on this? Brian?
No, sir.
Mr. Dufrain? Would you like to say something?
She said so.
Oh, okay.
For the record, Adrian Dufrain, Representative Precinct Two, and I'm here to support the, this project. If those of you that can remember, when the town originally acquired this property, I was on the Finance Committee, and it was unanimous against the town's ownership. And I've watched a serious deterioration of the building, and, since then. And so here we have an opportunity to not only provide some reasonably housing within the center of the community, but also the preservation, if I remember, was Mr. Boyer that got up and said, "As long as we don't lose the historical significance." But we've modified historical buildings. I don't know if any of you have been watching the reconstruction of the old Dr. Tripp House over there on Village Green, with these alternative materials, construction materials. You can make an old piece of crap really look good.[1738.25][1738.25](LAUGHING) And I'm hoping, and I have faith in the proponents of this project, that this will be something that we can all be proud of, once we get it out of our hands and put it into the hands of someone that can really do something with it and use it. So I strongly support the, that the Board of Selectmen would, again, and I sense that there's a feeling on the board that this is a good way of bringing this building up to what we can all be proud of, sitting right there in the middle of Main Street. And I don't believe it's in the historical zone. Seems to me it's just out of the zone. And, you know, we've modified some of our own buildings, you know, the library was one, and the Mullen School was another. So it's not without the realm of doing something to make something look good within the center of town. And I, again, I'm not going to beg you, you know, I was born next door. of town. And I, again, I'm not going to beg you, you know, I was born next door, next door to the Oddfellows Hall, so that puts me in that category, odd fellow. I just like to see...
Historic.
Was that right around when it was being built?
Almost.
I just want to make one other comment. I want to really congratulate Annie on the great group of significant partners that she has enabled to put together to make this project successful, because no, one person can't do it all, but you certainly have a wonderful group of people to assist you in this.
Thanks. I'm lucky, and I have a very supportive board. And so, it's a group effort. But thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Including our former selectman, Kerry Murphy. Nice to see you.
Do you remember what this room looked? Remember what this room looked like? Remember what this room looked like?
I'm going to switch discs.
Okay.
While there's a break.